So.
A little bit of shade, I'm sorry.
Why do you have to run so many desks?
Just like. I can think.
Okay.
No. Oh god. Yes, so. So.
How about this?
They go. I know. I'm going to. I'm sorry. I don't. I'm spending. That's hilarious. I can both remember. Oh, babe. You're up there.
And then what that they want.
Oh. Oh. See you later.
Good day.
I'll be. He is. I did. I don't think we're like. That could. I think. My. Oh, come on, man. Yeah. Yeah. Amazing. Shit. Let's see what's in our. It's good.
I have a lot of stuff here. Parrish, alright. Council retreat here, just to manage their stuff, if anyone comes back to their seats.
It was too loud. We're loud.
We're loud. Okay, good morning, everyone.
Oh, wait, wait. Don't kiss her.
Good morning.
Yeah, for the mayor.
Start.
That's right, because you're here. You have a corps and you're now mayor. You might be the restaurant.
Walk down.
Alright.
Help me think, everybody knows where restaurants are.
Yes.
Plenty of. We need more. Thank you, Parrish, for coming over there.
Yeah, and thank you to Brick Road. Coffee, we.
Yep, yep.
They cater for us this morning.
There he is. We didn't really do the job.
On the bear.
He had.
Poor guy.
You have the wager.
God, leave two seconds.
Alright, well, good morning, everyone, and I have the privilege of introducing you to the first presenter this morning, who will guide you for the next couple hours on the retreat, and start the introduction by asking a couple questions. Have you ever spoken to a team member and got that deer-in-the-headlights look, and you knew that they had no idea what you were talking about, yet you believe that you spoke very clearly to them? Or maybe a couple of team members, whose personalities clash, and you're always the one working with them on conflict resolution? If you give yes to any of those questions, it's time to make a change now. And today, we're going to explore solutions from leadership styles to delegation, and after you hear Dr. Karen Jacobson's presentation, you'll discover how to make that change. Dr. Karen has over thirty years of leadership and communication expertise, starting from her service as a military commander in the Israeli army, and to today, sitting on boards at various professional associations, as well as running multi-general businesses. She's also a champion Latin ballroom dancer, and so that will keep you on your toes, as she shares with you, and with anyone, anytime, through power conversations, leading a high-performance team. So now, please welcome, from the battlefield to the ballroom, and now to our city, Dr. Karen Jacobson.
Good morning. How many of you can remember the first leadership mission you've ever taken? About eleven. I was responsible for the flag. And the flag had colors very similar to the city of Tempe. It was yellow flag with blue petals all around, and on it was the word "on it." In Hebrew, it means "sheked." And as the flag bearer, it was my responsibility to guard, to carry, to protect for my troop in the scouts. And I remember holding on every time to that flag with pride. And from that day on, one of the biggest challenges for me was absolutely to say no. When I was in the leadership. Now, being able to be a leader, for some people, might come very naturally, and yet the beauty, whether it's three people in your family, you're leading a city, or you're leading a country, they're all skills that we can learn. And some of those skills are things we are going to talk about today. Now, I know for a fact, because I've worked with several departments and people in this city, that there's some amazing people working here. And every single person that is here, that has stepped up to leadership. Has done that. Because they carry a reason, a why, that is important to them. Today, we're going to put that aside, and we're going to focus on some other things. See, we might know, and you might know, your own why, why you stepped up. But the questions today that we'll dig into is a little bit about, who are you really in your core, in your essence? Who are the people, the team, that you're working with? How do you connect with them, collaborate with them, and work with them in an effective fashion? And what it takes to really build a strong, supportive leadership? So, we're going to start off by the request of Parrish, with a little bit of fun. This is not about a boring presentation today. You guys do not want me to stand here and lecture to you for two and a half hours. We're going to have fun. I was told by this lovely lady, council member, that I need to take the high heels off and stay in my flats. So, if I can kick my shoes off, everyone else here can kick their shoes off as well. So here's what we're going to do. Everyone that is here, whether the council and the aides and all the entire team, we're going to play a game. And we've played this, actually, with TPDN. This is the first time that we played this game in this city. You're going to pass the ball around to somebody of your choice that you would like to know something new about. On this ball, there are questions. When you receive the ball, you're going to look at the question, and here's a little trick. The questions, some of them are upside down. Don't try those. Just look at the one that's what in front of you. One thing I couldn't live without. People. I couldn't live without people. So, we're going to start off, I'm going to get you guys up and moving. And you know what? Let's come here, and because we've got the lovely owl, let's kind of gather around, let's find a little spot where we can gather, in front of the tables, let's get everybody here. And I'm going to start off, other side of the table. We're going to come, we're all going to come around here.
Nigel, hop over there.
It'd be like the game five and three.
Alright, and you can come around here, too. I'm going to stand around here. So I'm going to start off by handing this to our man. Read out the question and then answer.
My biggest waste of time? Uh, drama. I hate drama. I like getting work done, I hate drama.
Awesome. Now you pick somebody and toss that over, too.
I feel most alive when. Sorry, but it's the truth when I'm helping people. That's, that's the truth.
Nikki. Your order. My worst habit. Shoe shopping.
Tom. Three worst, best, oh, three words that best describe me.
That's two.
Introvert. Real. And funny sometimes.
Pass it along to someone.
Take a good one.
I'll be successful if whatever I do lifts up everybody else around me.
That was a really good one, actually.
I wish to be better, I wish to be better at eating my way.
My best friend in elementary school, Carleen Kellogg. Alright, there we go.
Oh, my favorite entertainer. Oh, man. Me, me. Yes, you know what? I'm going to say, and I know this is controversy, but Michael Jackson.
Someone can walk like. I know.
What I think about tattoos. They're good for other people.
A bunch of hitting it, so somebody's got to claim it.
Yeah. Claim to fame. Besides being the former vice mayor of the city, I was senior prom king.
Really? I learned best by doing.
Ooh, I can live anywhere.
Oh.
And only two weeks ago. I'll go back in a minute.
No, I wasn't repeating.
I would say, I wish to be better at listening to others.
My smartest decision, joining City of Tempe.
I think.
If I had one million dollars, I would give everyone in this room at least ten thousand.
My friend. If I could travel anywhere, I like Paris. Always. My perfect meal, Mexican burger, of course.
Best advice I ever received, if you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem.
Yeah, I know, I'm last.
Best for us.
Exactly.
I'm here because I want to be.
Uh-oh, Carla.
Countries I have traveled to, Mexico and St. Lucia.
You want to go again, or you're all done? Alright.
Now, you guys can take your seats. One of the things in being able to build community is about learning about each other. And while some of you were able to bring out maybe some of your personal side, your fun side, that's part of what makes you the endearing person that you might be. Some may be a little bit more than others. What we will be doing is going deeper into discovery. Let's talk about leadership. When we look at leadership, which every single person here is a leader in this community, being able to create a situation where people have the opportunity to shine, and we can do good work that has meaning, is going to elevate our community to the next level. So when you think about leadership, and now that we've done some of the fun stuff, I want you to think about the leadership qualities that you bring to the table. So in front of you, you have a little yellow card, green card, wow, so I'm colorblind. You have a little green card. What you're going to do is you're going to write two qualities that you bring to the table as a leader. Just two. Two leadership qualities that you present, that you bring. And I'm going to ask for a volunteer to help, and once you're done with that, to help gather the cards. And here's what we're going to do. We are not putting names on the card. And since I'm the one reading them, hopefully, keep the handwriting nice and clear. But we're going to see how well we actually know each other, not by what we eat, or where we like to vacation, but actually, as leaders, what do we bring to the table? So think about your two top leadership qualities, write them down, and let's make, thank you, Parrish. And Parrish will collect the cards. If, if, if one of the qualities is two words, do you have my permission to use two words? And while we're doing that, let's, let's talk about leadership in general. What makes a difference, you know, between a leadership team and a work group? See, when we gather together initially, and we might want to create some change, how do we move from being a work group that's gathered for a purpose to being a leadership team? What are some of the differences? This is the participatory part. What's the difference? Think of, think of your teams, what's the difference? What makes a difference between a group that's just working together versus a team that is successful? Yes. And it would really help me, by the way, because we don't have name tags, if you just state your name and where, and I know, you have to tell me.
Keely, I'm in staff. Um, I would say difference if you have like the common goal, if you're attending a school.
Okay, having a common goal, excellent. What else? Who else?
I do.
Yes.
Brigetta, and ability to work together.
The ability to work together, excellent. What else? Yes.
Eyes into that, but connection.
A connection. What creates the connection?
Relationships.
Relationships? Yes.
Common goals.
Common goals, as opposed to personal goals, right?
Yes.
Yes, that was right on. What else? So let's look at some of the differences. Individual goal versus a vision, mission, a purpose. And as you can see, we also know that there are certain values which we have up there, which when we look at the values of the city, a lot of those ideas are embraced here, the connection, the relationships, the diversity in people, that's what makes a team. When we're looking at common goal for success or failure versus individual, it's not about me, you know, being the star of the team, it's about us being able to create something together and become successful. And in order to do that, we need to make sure that we're not accountable just to ourselves, but we're actually accountable to the entire team, to each other. So that collaboration, that mutual respect, comes into play. Now, these are all fancy words, the same way trust is a fancy word, but how do we actually create those? What's going to make a difference also between a team versus a high-performing team? So, let's look at what makes the difference between just a team that was put together that has maybe a vision and a purpose, to having a strong, successful, high-performing team. And that's the five Cs. The first one is communication, and that is what. The first one is communication, and that is what we are going to focus on today. How do we communicate effectively with each other? Being able to create understanding, being able to collaborate, cooperate, and work together. A high performance team has committed action. I already know by the fact that you are sitting here that you are committed to making a change in the city. And many of you have been here for many years. That's showing the level of your commitment. That's already a blockstone to building a high performing team. Collaboration. Collaboration at a high performing team comes from the understanding of each other, knowing what makes each other tick, leaving our egos out the door to know that we're working with each other, with other people. And that helps us build our camaraderie. Last and not least is the creative problem solution. Being able to come up with ideas that are outside the box. So let's look at what you guys, ladies and gentlemen, bring to the table. Can I have someone who has like better handwriting than mine? Mine is really bad because as a, as a doctor, there's a prerequisite for bad handwriting.
It's Catholic school.
Ever get the rule out?
I'm gonna give you this candy marker, and what we're going to do is, oh, I'm gonna put on the little iassists here so I can read. And we're gonna start with the first one. The first person has curiosity and is empathetic. So when you look around at your team members, who do you think this card belongs to? Curiosity and empathy. Any ideas? Yeah, that is, this is part of the game, how well you know your team members. Who would be the one?
Doreen, yep.
Let the record show I took Doreen first.
Are we gonna say if it's us or not?
That's okay, not yet. We have several votes for Doreen. So but you can put up their curiosity and empathy, and then.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with that too.
So how many, raise your hand if you have, if you have your hand up for Doreen on this one. Okay, so now, well, you're not supposed to give away. Okay, and, and so let's look at how many would say this is Carla? And how many might have other ideas?
Our lead.
So, so, so we have, we have some for Carla and we have some for Arlene? Okay.
It's the Ee.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna hold on to that. Wanna hold on to that, or you wanna know now? Who's the one that's curious?
I'm curious. No, just to know.
But here's, but here's the deal, here's the deal, why we're not gonna do it now. Because by process of elimination, it makes the game easier later. So, so I'm gonna have one more, I'm gonna have one more assistant, please. And what you'll do is you will put on the back of the card, on the card, you will put who the audience, who the team members think it is. Ooh, empathy and organization. Who is empathy and organization? Who do you think?
Oh, no, wait, that could be Doreen.
I'm gonna say Doreen.
So there's some for Doreen, empathy and organization, any other ideas?
Carla.
Carla. How many for Carla, raise your hand? How many for Doreen? It's about the same. So you put those, any other, any other people you think it might be? Okay, so this is, this one is Carla and Doreen, and you.
Organization.
Organization, yes. Okay, moving right now, we got our system going, so we'll move right along. Collaboration and understanding. Collaboration and understanding. Andrew, who else thinks Andrew? Who else thinks somebody else? The mayor. How many of you think the mayor? Okay, so we're gonna have mostly the mayor and the possibility of Andrew. Next one. I focus on listening, I respect everyone no matter what their opinion is. So listening and respect.
I'm saying Jennifer.
How many for Jennifer? Perdita. Andrew.
We're gonna put all three of those.
Jennifer. Listening and leading by example. It's pretty unanimous on this one. Ability to make an own decisions. Listening. Everybody. Doreen, everybody. The entire, the entire team. Now it made some more options. The two words were ability to, to make an own decisions and to listen.
Yeah, Sonia.
Seems pretty unanimous on this one. Curiosity and calm demeanor. Curiosity and calm demeanor. So we have Tanya. And who else? Is there anyone else you think aside from Tanya? And Nikki.
Calm demeanor.
Calm demeanor. Communication and working well with others.
I think.
I go Sarah.
Yeah, Sarah.
I'll go Jennifer.
Any, any other votes? So this one had three different ones. So if you're looking at, at, let's try this again, Jennifer? Who else?
Sarah.
Sarah? And Paul. Jennifer, Sarah, and Paul. No, Parrish will help you. He's writing on them. Even small handwriting, insight and brevity. Insight and brevity. Insight and brevity.
I don't think that's him, because I think that would've, that's a gigantic fake out of his head. I would've gone with him otherwise, though. I'm gonna go Paul too. I'm gonna say Randy.
So, so, so here's a question so far. As we go through, not that easy, right? Not that easy. We might not know each other as well as we think. Experience. And this looked like work skills. Is this work skill?
Joel.
Joel.
Maybe it's teamwork skill.
You want me to say? I thought it was pretty serious to give it away to me.
Oh, here's another, organization and empathy. Did we not have one of those before?
I'll go Keely.
Who knew? Who would expect that, right?
I didn't make the half straight comment.
Organization and empathy. We have another empathy here, five dollars for empathy. Empathy and integrity.
Arlene.
Empathy and integrity.
Wait a minute, Doreen, I'll take both of those. And the Ee's? You want the Ee's? The Ee's together. Say Andrew.
Say Tom.
I'd say Sam.
I'll say Tom as well.
You're allowed to vote for somebody else. Empathy and integrity. Who might that be? So we've got Tanya, we've got who else?
That's the opposite of integrity, Tanya, if you're the person. Sarah.
Whoever this one is, I love the fact that they wrote it in nice, large letters. I can even read it without my feet. Perseverance and inspiring. Perseverance and inspiring. Rosa, so every, everyone going for Rosa? We got Keely and we've got Rosa, we've got some division there. A good listener and organized.
Sarah.
That seems pretty unanimous on that one. Someone who's good their skills are working as a team and motivating. So we got a cheerleader in the room. Which one would that be? We got those, we've got votes, how many for, for Bruchetta? And who was the other one for Keely? Rosa. Empathetic and action oriented. We've got a lot of empathy in this. Empathetic and action oriented. That's Rosa. So you can pull Rosa off all the other ones, right? You see what I'm saying? Not that easy, not that easy. Experience and networking. So when you think of someone who's experienced and networked, think someone that has the ability to connect with other people very well. Nikki? How many for Nikki? How many for Parrish? I'm gonna put both of those on there. We're getting down to the wire. Knowledge and experience. Someone who thrives on their knowledge and has experience.
Yeah, Jennifer.
Jennifer.
Jennifer going once, going twice.
Jennifer has experience.
Ooh, someone who's good at creating change and also embraces diversity. Create change and also diversity. Well, I added the embracing, it just.
That change and diversity, I put Perdita.
Knowledge. Knowledge and invested in the organization.
Tom or Andrew?
So, so do you notice that we've got certain names that keep on coming up regularly, which you're not sure, and then there are some people in the room whose names have not been mentioned yet? Interesting enough. I'm good at
Not writing.
At conveying a Well, this was, obviously whoever this is respectfully, and I'm not gonna say, but we asked for two words. I'm good at, at conveying a clear message and narrative. I believe I'm good at always trying to see the bigger picture in complex situations. So one of them is communication, is being able to carve a message. The other one is being able to see the big idea.
That's the band.
Okay.
But not brevity.
Thank you for saying that. Okay. Now, what you're going to do is you're going to, now you're gonna go, and here's the interesting thing, you're gonna read, you'll read, you'll read the names, and, and the owner, the true owner of the column. Well, at least either stand up or raise their hand.
I say stand up.
First one, knowledge and invested in the organization. Knowledge invested in the organization.
Andrew.
Okay, and then everyone thought it was either Randy, Andrew, or Tom.
There you go.
The next one, I'm good at conveying a clear message and narrative. I believe I'm good at always trying to see the bigger picture in complex situations. I'm good at conveying a clear message and narrative. I believe I'm good at always trying to see the bigger picture in complex situations.
And who was, and who, what, you, who, well, first you were gonna mean.
Remember that Keely Sapan. People thought it was Sapan, but.
And it's how well you know your mayor.
Next. Oh, God. Empathy, integrity. Empathy, integrity.
So here's what you do. You did the other way now, Parrish. Read what, what.
Oh.
What the audience saw.
Okay, alright.
And then the person was.
And everyone thought it was Tom or Tanya. Sarah or Parrish? Good listener, organization.
That's me. I know. And you know, I clipped in strengths of empathy, but I did not put that down and I.
Insight, sorry, Paul or Randy were the guesses. The words are insight, brevity.
Not the mayor.
Not the mayor. People thought this was either Keely, Sarah, Rosa. Keely, Sarah, Rosa. Perseverance, inspiring. It was me. Next. Who else? Joel. Okay, experience, work skills. Experience, work skills. You're a, what do you call it? Mob skills. And guess what Carla thought it was? Next, okay, well, everybody thought this was Nikki. Organization, empathy. Ah.
Yay.
Okay, next up, well, we already got these Randy and Andy were the guesses. Create change, diversity. Next up, Jennifer was the guest. Knowledge, experience. You know it was you. Open and transparent. Okay, Nikki or Parrish? And it was experience and networking. Experience and networking. Okay, Tanya, Nikki, or Keith? Tanya, Nikki, or Keith? Curiosity called demeanor.
I love how you guys are just leaving, just leaving a little suspend.
That's so busy. Next up, the guesses were Jennifer, Sarah, or Paul. Communication, working well with others. Alright, the guesses were Rosa or Berdeta, and it's working as a team, motivated. Working as a team, motivated. The guesses were Berdeta, Andrew, Jennifer. I focus on listening. I respect everyone, no matter their opinion. Okay, the guesses were mayor or Andrew. Collaboration, understanding. Alright, the guesses are Carla, Doreen, or Tanya. Empathy, organization.
Do we have the same two?
Yeah, I know.
Next up, the guesses were Doreen, Carla, or Arlene. Curiosity, empathetic. Curiosity, empathetic. Next one, it was all in for Arlene on this one. It was listen to others, lead by examples. Listen to others. Next up, it was either Mayor or Rosa, and it was empathetic and action oriented. Is that you?
Yeah.
And the last one, everybody thought it was Sonia. So ability to make and own decisions and listen.
So what does that tell you?
We're pretty good.
At least, at least you're transparent and everybody knows you. And, and that is very true.
That is true.
And that is a key that we're gonna focus on today because we do have commonalities. Now, most of the time, when we go places, we'll look at people and we'll look to see, well, you know, what are they? Are they different? Are they the same? And what happens is when we look at some of those differences, those differences create barriers for us, and they create bias in our mind, and that bias affects us when we work together. And so in order to really reverse that pattern, we have to start looking at what we have in common. And when we look at commonalities, whether it is our history, our experience, our culture, our belief systems, our communication styles, we are diverse in our being. Today, our goal is to focus on how do we communicate well with each other and what is our essential behavior? When we're, when we look. When we look at leaders, you now shared some of your own qualities, and part of being an effective leader is that ability to listen. It's that ability to communicate effectively and that ability to really engage people and deliver clear messages. Now, when we ask the question about whether you've ever been in a conversation with someone where you kind of saw that head tilt, that deer in the headlights, you know they spoke English, you spoke English, but for some reason, they weren't getting it. It's maybe because somewhere along the way, you weren't speaking their specific language. And what do I mean by that? The, yes. And, and what was her skill?
Communication languages.
Yes. Her, her skill, so this is Hoshi. Anyone, anyone Star Trek fans?
Randy.
Aside from Randy and I, aside from Randy and I, this was, this is like my superpower, my dream of my superpower. I want to be able to walk into a room and within seconds, understand what people are saying. Well, here's the deal. I may not speak French, I may not speak Italian, I may not speak Chinese, but I do understand people because I've made it my point to learn to listen and to better understand and speak the language of the people around me so that I can connect and communicate. How many of you have ever been in a situation where you walked in somewhere and, and you just had your opinions about people, you scanned the room, you looked at like, okay, those are people that I think I can connect with, and you just walked over there and spoke with them without necessarily being able to notice the rest of the people? Have you ever seen a situation where, where there's a group and there's someone kind of on the outside of the group that is standing there? What do you do? Do you open up and let them in? See, most of the time, we really operate with our subconscious mind. We don't even notice those things. We don't notice those things about the people around us. We don't even notice aspects of our behavior. Our focus is what makes the difference. So in order to really know and learn the difference, you know, we, we have leadership in different positions, and when we're looking at different leadership styles, it's because the people's personalities are coming through. When we look at some of these leaders, we would say that when we look at their demeanor, they're different from each other, right? But they're all leaders, and that's what have, what keeps them in common. The question is, when you're looking at you as an individual, what's your personal preference? Where do you fit in with your behavior style and what kind of a leader, what kind of a communicator might you be? How many of you have ever taken an assessment? I know in the city, you actually have done COLORS, right? COLORS is one of many types of assessments. There is Myers-Briggs, there is DISC, there is.
Strength Finders.
Strength Finders, thank, that was, we took the words right out of my mouth. I was like, I had it two point, I had the 2.0 in my head. I forgot the first two words. There's Colby, there's a number of different types of assessments. What they really are are tools to show us our individual preferences. They're not about labeling people. They're not about putting people in boxes. It's about being able to help us understand and recognize certain skills, certain behaviors in other people, so it makes it easier for us to communicate with them on an equal level. So, we're gonna start off by first understanding ourself. Parrish, if you would, please, we're gonna take a few moments and hand out just the assessment, the short assessment. And before we get to the assessment, let me give you an overview. This is based on DISC, so for those that might have taken DISC, you'll see some similarities. And when we look at, at people's behavior, there're gonna be some people that are moving at a fast pace. I'm sure you can identify them, you can see them. There's one standing in front of you right now that tends to speak faster, tends to, tend to move faster. There're also going to be those that move at a slower pace. It's just their preference. They're going to be people that are going to be focused more on fact and information, and then there'll also be people that are gonna be focused more on the feelings, on the emotions around things. No good or bad, no judgment on anything, just plain preference. Now, when we look at the four characters, you'll see the first one has more of the commander's style. That is someone who's fast paced and focuses on information and facts. Then there will be the cheerleader. The cheerleader is fast paced, focused more on people. On the other level, you will have the caregiver, who's gonna be slower in pace, still focused more on, on feelings and people, and last but not least, the computer witch. Now, before you take that assessment, before you take that assessment, I want you on the back or on a piece of paper, just for yourself, put down who you think you are out of those four. Who might you think you are out of those? Because the question is, how well do you know yourself?
If you ask me a stupid question. You probably will think it is. Are we, this, is it who we are at work? Because who I am at work is different than when.
So when we dive into this deeper, that is exactly what we look at. So, so when we go into, when DISC in its fullest goes into the natural and the adapted, adapted is at work and under constraint, and we are. Many of us are going to be different at home versus the way we are at work. Today, since we are at work, we are dealing with that aspect. So how you are and how you show up at work, and mind you, by the way, when you're looking at these four characters, we all have all four characters in us, but it's what do we lead with and what is our preference when we are at work? Does that make sense? So now, we will move to the assessment, and you know what? I just want to tell you who started this because there's a couple of cool tidbits. The first one is that we are celebrating the hundred years this year for the polygraph, the first polygraph, and that was created by the same person that created the original DISC, which is Dr. Martinson. The other thing that he's famous for is Wonder Woman. 1941. He created Wonder Woman and the character, and the character of Wonder Woman was actually created out of that, out of DISC and, and part of the, it was, he actually started, he had four women characters that were showing the different leadership styles, different behavioral styles. Those who might like the information and the background. So when we're looking at the assessment, you'll have nine questions. Each question has four parts. You're going to rank them. From four is the most like me, one is the least like me. At the bottom of the nine blocks, you'll have the ability to sum up your total. When you sum up your total, you'll circle the one that has the highest number. If you have any questions, then just raise your hand and I will come over and help you. Let's take a few minutes to answer the assessment. Let's take a few minutes to answer the assessment. All right. How many are still working on it? Okay, we'll give you a couple more minutes. Yes, make sure that once you, once you answer all the questions, tally up the numbers at the end. All right. If you have, pretty much, most of you have gone through that, so. For those of you, yes. No, that's okay. Some people, some people need to review it several times. That's okay. So my first question to you is how many of you actually ended up, after you did the assessment, finding that your first preference is what you thought it would be? And how many of you got something different from what you thought? Interesting, right? So let's dig in. Are we tied? That, that's a lovely question, and there is. There are, there are different preferences where you could be dominant in two different styles. Remember, we have all, all styles within us in different orders. Okay? And whether, if you're at home versus at work in different circumstances, you might use and lean more towards one behavior or another. Okay, so let's start off digging into the first style. First style is commander. Now, each style has an area that they focus on. Commanders normally focus on, on problems and challenges. It's just, again, their preference. So how do you spot someone who is a commander? When we look at their body language, they are normally going to be the type of people that, that when they're talking, they're always leaning forward, they're always kind of on the go. Sometimes they'll say like, you know, they charge like a bull. They'll walk fast. They're always there to get somebody. Okay, so you guys are having pictures in your head, aren't you? Yes. So you know. And their gestures, they're going to be expressive and emphatic. Hand movements. It's okay. It's a preference. Don't be upset. Who in the room, show of hands, are the commanders?
Not according to my own assessment.
Not according to your own assessment. Sometimes you have to be like that at work. There are going to be different positions as far as, as jobs and different situations where that might come out more. There are also going to be different communities, like people in service organization, people in leadership, even in the city. I have found in working with other organizations, we did, what was it, with First Transit, when I worked here with First Transit, a lot of the leadership team are actually the caregivers. And they did not have any cheerleaders on their team. So, so it really depends. The important part is number one, to know that. And the second thing, to know that at times with certain decisions, with certain aspects of work, you might have to lean in to that skill if that's something that's close on the board. Is there anyone that might have had maybe like a commander-cheerleader combo? So you're a commander-cheerleader combo. Yeah. So, so when we do the next activity, you're going to go on the commander's side. What is a command? And remember, this is, this is a, this is a general overview. And it is a drop in the bucket. When, when I, when I go into organizations and I do a full day of, a full retreat, a team retreat with the assessment, we'll take the full DISC, we'll take motivators, we'll take emotional intelligence. So it's, you know, and you'll spend 45 minutes doing assessment and really being able to dig in to the different qualities that your persona brings out. And so this is really a taste. But it, but it gives a good idea of what your preference is and what you lead with, specifically when you're looking at work situations. This is what I'm thinking about. Commanders are very direct. Remember, they are big-picture people. They're very direct. They're organized. Now, DISC may not always be organized, but their thought process is organized. They're goal-oriented. They're looking for the solutions. They're high achievers, which means they also have high standards. They have a core question. Every single one of the styles has a core question. And what do I mean by that? A core question is the question that dominates their conversation. So what's next? What are we going to do? What is it going to cost? You know, what's the effect? What's the result? So that is a conversation piece for them. They want to know what. And it's the fact, not the feeling behind it. So therefore, sometimes when we look at those commanders, because they're so focused, they're so goal-oriented, they so much want that challenge and the achievement, and they're not focused on the emotional side, that could backfire them. And how can it backfire? Sometimes they'll come across as being cold and unemotional, where they may not be. It's just a repressed thing. How many of you have heard of leaders, especially a big company? What is the biggest health challenge that they've had? What does the heart hold? It's the center of emotions. And so when you hold that, when you repress that, that is a result. That is also something where they might burst out. And when they're stressed, they might respond with anger. The important thing on situations like that is to be aware of the way they behave. Who are my cheerleaders in the room? Awesome, awesome. Now, by the way, that does not mean that, you know, you're like Richard Simmons dancing to the oldies. It means that you have a preference. Yeah, it's not, not everyone is, ah! But what it means, what it means is that we have, the cheerleaders have focus on people and making connections. When there was words earlier about skills as networking, cheerleaders are great networkers. Now, they may not always be the best listeners, because cheerleaders might tend to have squirrels in their own head. And they painted the picture. So what do they, what is their behavior when you look at them? It all makes sense. So again, they are going to be fast-paced, fast-moving, big-picture. Fast-paced, big-moving, big-picture, but different in their approach, because they're more about the people, they're more about the relationships. So when we look at their physiology, their stance, their feet are going to be spread apart. They're, they're solid on the ground. Now, their movement might be like squirrels, sketchy in different directions. You know, they might have a tendency to bump into things. That explains it. And they'll, they'll just go from place to place. A lot of gestures, a lot of hand movements, sometimes to the extent where they might knock into someone. And they're very expressive. They wear their emotions on their face. One of the things which is a big giveaway is the fact that they're very chatty. They talk really quick. Now, when, when we look at cheerleaders, at some of their preferences and their qualities, they're the risk tapers, they're your daredevils. They're very outgoing. They tend to share feelings. They tend to blurt out their thoughts. They are highly competitive. Now, when you look at the people that prefer to lead with the cheerleader's side, you never want to take away credit for that, what they've accomplished. They're more on the innovative side, because they think outside, they're creative, they think outside the box. And they like that. Being that they are risk-takers, you'll notice later on where that can cause with some of the other behaviors, some challenges. Cheerleaders have a core question. Their core question is who. And what I mean by that is they want to know about the people that they are working with. So as an example, if you have a bio and a description, it's not just about what they did, which would be more of the commander's style in the bio. It would be like who they are. They have family, they have dogs, maybe they have hobbies. They want to know about the person that they're connecting with. Painting you some pictures?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Now, remember, they still have, you can still relate to them on the other levels, but that is their, that's what they lead with. That's what they prefer. Caregivers. And I know we have a few on that table. Who are my caregivers in the room? And, and again, in a deeper, in a deeper, you might, because you might end up finding difference with a full-length assessment. Cities, people who work, people who work in public service, people who work in public service are generally leaning more towards caregivers, because it is about of being serviced, especially when we take it to another level, when we do a full assessment and, and we go into the motivators, what drives us, then, then whether you are people that are more altruistic, people that are more selfless, that will serve the community. So let's, let's look at what they focus on. They focus on pace and consistency. By the way, anyone who is primarily a caregiver, caregivers make great customer service people, and they also make great listeners. They're also great in practice management. So their, their administration, so running a project, making sure, because they're very methodical, they'll make sure that things get done the way they're supposed to get done. Hence all the aides that are making sure that, you see how they fit in? So let's look at, at some of their presence. What, what is your name again? I'm pointing, and again, this is to point out, because it's a perfect example. Even with sitting, leaning back, it's, they're more quiet. They're more of the reserved, quiet and reserved styles. They're slower-paced. Now, slower-paced, by the, by the way, only means that they prefer to digest ideas, and it takes time. It has nothing to do, I mean, some of the most brilliant minds on this planet are going to be below the fold as far as slower-paced inventors and scientists and caregivers and, and people that have contributed to our society. So someone who needs to take their time has no reflection on their abilities. It's a preference to process, digest. Many of them actually have conversations and repeat stuff in their own head when people talk to them. No, seriously. They repeat, they'll repeat the question and analyze it. So it's self-conscious. So if I ask you a question, Jennifer, and, and you go over the question in your head again, it helps you process the information. It's a preference. They're slower, they're steady, they're slower in their movement, they're slower even in the way in their talk, they're quieter, they're calmer. They'll have some gestures with hands, but most of the time, they're more calm and quiet. One of the telltale signs when you see them is at a meeting, poker face. They will listen and listen for a long period of time, digest the information, and then just say one thing that's like super brilliant. I know, I just told you, that's totally. We are all parts of all of us. We are the world. So, so remember poker face, there's, there's, there's a number of things, and this is more about the behavior style, but you also look at other things, at experience, at culture, at age. Different people will behave differently. This is a measure and not a box. We only get put in the box later in life, or when there is no luck. What are some of the, some of, some of the characteristics? They are very devoted, because they're focused on people. They're focused on the, they're real team players, and they're great listeners. They're focused on the benefit of... They're focused on the benefit of the team, the benefit of the company. They are devoted. They're very helpful. Now, you can run, because they're great listeners, you can run into an occasional problem is that somebody will come and they'll, they'll start telling stories and they're at your desk. And they kind of live there without moving. And so that's something to, to notice. They also are not great with confrontation. So if they're working and there's a conflict, they may not know how to say things, how to push back. It's a matter of understanding because they are peacemakers. They wanna make sure that everyone is happy. Their core question is why? And these core questions, mind you, are not just what help them understand the information. These are actually tools. And later on, we'll look at how we can use these tools to better communicate with each other and get results. Okay, drumroll. You ready? Last but not least, the computer whiz. The computer whiz is one who focuses on procedures and constraints. I was just going to ask that. So Jennifer would like to know who the computer whiz are in the room. That is the, yes, that's her commander card. So the computer, the computer whiz, and you'll find them a lot in technology, it's slow-paced, high-data. And the higher the score is, the more information, the more data they look for. Again, their conversation, their communication is indirect and they are more reserved. They're thinkers. Your aunt just had a picture in her head. This is the humorous part, yes. They walk in a very straight line. They're very precise. They're reserved. They're very diplomatic. Not a lot of gesturing. They, again, yes.
No gestures.
No, no major gestures. As a matter of fact, at, in conversations at time, they'll be withdrawn. When you do your teams meetings, you can think of some of these people that don't necessarily turn on their cameras. They won't turn their cameras on, they also won't go into the spotlight because that's not a place they're comfortable with. They're thorough. They're practical. Many of them are perfectionists and they want all the information and all the facts. They have high standards for everything that they do. It has to flow logically. I see the pictures coming up in your heads. Their core question is how? How is this gonna work? How are we going to do this? Now, when we look at the four styles, to sum them up, each one will tell you what they focus on. So the commander, who focuses on results, will talk about the fact that, let's just do this. They like to act, act, try new things and plunge in. The cheerleader is all about the experience. They like to look at the big picture, the people that are involved and the connections that they can make. The caregiver is about the security and the safety. That's steadiness. Not a lot of change, not a lot of rattle. And they like to know that everyone is feeling okay, that everyone is doing well and all the facts have been taken into consideration so that everyone can be heard. And last and not least, the computer whiz. So they pay attention to all the information. They have your data. They might be some of your tech people, they might be in accounting, they might be in engineering, they might be mechanics, any of those people that have that information, that data. And they like to know the who, the what, the when and the where before they act. So they have the big, they have all the details, whereas the commander and the cheerleader want the big picture. These guys need all the details to make things happen. Now, every single style brings value to the table. The question is, how do we connect each other? How do we communicate with the different styles? Because when you're with your own style, it's pretty easy, right? It's like, hey, it's kinship, we can talk. But how do you bridge the gap? Well, the way to bridge the gap is to really start digging into what the preferences are and learning to connect and communicate. So that's what we're gonna do right now. We're going to divide you into your different styles. And we'll use the tables that we have here. And you will work as teams to show some of the value that you bring and way to communicate with each other and what things you prefer and the things that you don't like. This way, we'll actually be able to hear from you how to communicate with you. So who, again, are my commanders? Well, you, you two are gonna be commanders. Is there anyone that's also very close that might be a commander and one-off? Yeah. Yeah. So the three of you, so we're gonna have, so actually, you'll go, the commanders are gonna be at, uh, table with, where Parrish is. Who are my cheerleaders? You'll pick the cheerleader and you'll pick the cheerleader. And, and the two, and you will be, um, actually, we'll bring you over there to that table. My caregivers? Okay. And the caregivers will go over to that table. And then we have the computer whiz, which are basically the, the rest. Is there anyone that's not sure what they are? So you will each have if I can get just the attention here, teams? Teams, if I can get your attention, please. You will each have a handout. The handout has a chart and then in the back, you'll also have a cheat sheet with some information about the different styles. What you will do is you'll have time, about 15 minutes, and you will go over some of the following as a group, and I will be accessible to you. Uh, Parrish has the handouts should you need. You know, uh, you'll put in the value that you bring with your specific style, the behaviors that frustrate you in others. What do you do that frustrates others? And what you like and dislike in communication? And when you're looking at your style, which style do you find the most challenging to communicate and work with? And then what you like about each?
Especially for like
Had you down and saying
Yeah.
Haven't seen that yet. Advanced ones. Doesn't mean.
I wasn't.
Down. Chair. You see. Style. And pizza.
I'm.
I don't think. So.
I found. I found.
I'm. Yeah.
Five members.
Oh.
I can't.
Um. Is it?
Yeah.
What we get? They. It's. Secret. Anyways.
That was. Same. Spots.
So. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. Characteristics of people. So.
I saw.
We are. Come down. Fire. They.
Well.
Stop. That was. I. Say. I can buy.
So.
But. Do you have?
Like. Bringing you.
I'm spending some time.
Well, fun.
I'll be.
Down.
We don't like. Rash.
Yes.
Yes.
You're.
Okay.
Something. I'm trying to build. So. He's. I think. Just. I first.
I just.
That was.
You. Nothing. Found. Yeah.
We.
Got.
And. Even.
Okay. Maybe. Sam. Never talked about again.
What is.
Since was more of that. Was he?
Oh. I love that. Down.
Tell me I'll do it. Let's wrap it up. We've got. Let's get. Let's get everybody back into the formation teams. Let's wrap it up. And go back to your original seats. The command. Yes, the commanders are the first class.
Surprised.
What is. Good.
Will.
Let's also make sure that each team, each team will pick a spokesperson. For those of you that still need a quick bio break, you can run out. Let's get the rest back to the. Back to our formation here. Is that right? Yeah. All right, let's wrap it up and get everybody into their seats. Are you ready? I give them their.
I know.
I'm good. We like. So far away from you guys. It's not.
Maybe there's.
I think when we get back to City Hall and the Giants, we should put like. All right. So. Council members, council members, back to your seats, please. Council members to your seats, please. I have a really good. Any questions? Maybe I need to hire you. That's what I'm here for. You give me a car. Okay. Okay, let's get everybody back to their seats, please. Hello there, Mayor. And we're ready for the home stretch.
Okay. Go ahead.
What? Can we just say it? This is driving me crazy. You don't understand. Okay, so first of all, what was it like, Jennifer? What was it like working with your own style? Great. It was. Awesome. We got along so well. They were so smart.
Maybe they get plans and everything.
And here's the interesting thing. While they were smaller group, but what's the group that finished first? Commander. The commanders.
Yeah.
Because they just went straight to, and if you look at what's listed, it will be a list of words. Exactly. Okay? If I asked for three things and I was asking, for instance, the computer whiz, I would have seven things on the list because they would always think about more. And they wouldn't necessarily be able to decide which to pick because all fit in and they're all part of. Normally, if we have a big cheerleader group, there you'll, you'll, you'll see, especially when we put these and we put them on the wall. Be colored. It's colorful and they're outside the lines and they're all over. So we, we really also show that in, in the way we work. But here are some of the questions and while you all have your charts, I'm going to ask each group to have a spokesperson. So let's start off with the. Commanders. Who's the spokesperson for the commander group? It is.
Yeah, Rosa.
Rosa. Most important thing on the list, what we'd like to know is how to best communicate with you. What are some of the things that you like? Direct. Like just straight into the point of. Rock stories. Okay. And what is, what are the top two qualities that you bring to the table? Excellent. Which style do you have the most challenge with? Okay. Let's see. Excellent. Everyone does have a little bit of everything. And even people with brevity can be long-winded at times. Let's move on. Thank you for that, Rosa. Let's move on to the report from the cheerleader group. Who is Jennifer? Go ahead.
Decision makers, passionate, experienced, motivators, competitive.
Excellent. And when it comes to communication, what are your preferences?
What are? Oh, okay, like what?
What do you like?
We like decision makers, informative. Like, like to know other people's point of view.
And what do you dislike?
Poor listeners, miscommunication, closed minded, mindedness.
Interesting. And that's coming from the cheerleaders who generally are the ones that will tend to jump into conversations and also at times be all over the place. That's where there might be a little bit of a, of a crossover. Which style do you have the most challenge with?
Uh, computer whizzes. Sorry, computer.
Feeling.
What I.
Wait until you're done, right? Let's let, thank you for that. Let's move over to the caregivers.
Before we start, just want to make sure that everyone feels like they got hurt. Are loyal, empathetic, peacemaking, dependable. We are motivated by our, our leadership is team, is being a member of the team and being a good listener and all, also good cultural skills. So we take care and we'll take care of her. And one of the other questions, yeah, the behavior that frustrates us is the stubbornness, individualness, narcissism, even being indecisive in party.
How about in communication, Tanya? How would you, how do you like people to approach you?
You know, we are the personable ones. We want relationships and connection. So I think the core question of why is how do you, why do you feel this way or why is, why are you coming? And what is the feeling behind what you're communicating? So we don't want it to just be a demand or this is what needs to happen. We want to go, hey, why do you want that to happen or?
The reasoning.
How are you?
Yes.
Jump right into.
So personable and reasoning behind.
Yes.
And what do you not like?
Don't like the closed off communicators or those that are distracted or not. They're just speaking, not really seeing us as people. And also very demanding. Demands.
And which style, Tanya, do you have the most? Challenge with?
Our commanders.
That's what I was gonna say.
Excellent. All right, last and not least, who's reporting for the computer whiz group?
Uh, okay, so we bring facts and truth and information. We're pragmatic. We're less emotional and we're strategic. Thanks. And what we like and dislike in communication, we like it when people are thorough and factual and they thought the things in advance about their ideas. Uh, we like sincerity and authenticity and we just don't like disorganization and sort of people and ideas who are all over the place. And the group we find the most difficult to work with are cheerleaders. Sorry, because they can be a little too reactionary. There you go. We're all about authenticity.
So, so there is, and there is a reasoning behind that. When you look, thank you for that. When we look at the different styles, if you look, if you look at the chart, you've got the top above the fold, which are the fast paced. Therefore, the computer, the commander and the cheerleader, they're both fast paced. They'll get along very well. The commander and the computer whiz are both information, so they will get along very well. Who do they have a problem with if they're the commander? With the diagonal.
Care.
The caregiver, where they're, where they're on the opposite end of the spectrum when it comes to information versus people or pace. Same thing if we look at the cheerleader. And the computer whiz. However. However, we'll get to that in a minute. How do we bridge and resolve some of those conflicts? And those are some of the things that will help you move forward and overcome some of those challenges. So, so let's look at, first of all, when we're talking about challenges, look, look at some of the concerns that each style has, which will give you an insight into how to approach them during conversation. Commander. Is concerned that they'll be taken advantage of. So what do they do? They attempt to control. And that control at times when they're extremely stressed. And come even across as micromanaging. So, so they need to be able to feel like they're able to control and trust a situation. The cheerleader. Because they're focused on the people around, if they don't feel validated, if they don't feel like they are being supported. And, and when I mean that, that's an example, as we talked about the competitiveness, or we talked about the fact that someone's taken credit for my work. No one sees my value. So being able to acknowledge them is essential for what they do. Loss of security, that's for the caregiver. So in a situation where we have instability, look at what we've been through for the last couple of years. There's uncertainty, there's instability. There are many people, and I'm sure you've seen that in the city, whether it is other city workers or the community. People that feel like the rug has been lifted from under their feet and they're concerned. So. They'll back away and, and they'll show up with fear. Last and not least. The computer whiz, because everything has to be perfect. If I don't do it well, oh my God, I'm going to make a mistake. That is their concern. So when you look at those factors and you look at the individual, it's the understanding of like, how can I help ease some of those concerns during the conversation? If those are my team members and those are some of the challenges that they're having, how do I act as support? How do I encourage them? How do I lend them a hand and be a resource? For those issues. Now, sometimes. When it comes to conversation, we'll have a different perception of ourselves versus what others might have of us. And, and I know it came up earlier when, when you were talking about, what did you say earlier in? And I know it came up earlier when you were talking about, what did you say earlier in the team meeting? About being, I think it was pushy?
Yeah, I'm very pushy. People see me as pushy.
And you saw yourself as what?
Persistent.
Persistent. So, let's look at, let's look and see if we can identify what style, what style might think they're quiet and others think they're disengaged. Who says computer whiz? How many vote?
I say computer whiz. Yeah. Computer whiz.
It's actually the caregiver.
Interesting.
So, remember, we said the poker face. They're withdrawn, they're indirect, it's the poker face. So, they will, they will sit, and remember, we said, at a meeting, they will sit and watch. They'll be quiet. And then they'll come in with a brilliance. Conscientious? Contentious? Computer whiz. In charge, controlling.
Commander.
Convincing or at times seemingly manipulative to others.
Karen, you're telling the truth.
Truly.
Because there's, in a way, the aspect, there's the attention and the focus. They also happen to be very optimistic and at times might seem a little too detached and optimistic. Under stress, commander can be impatient and argumentative. What is the key thing? Back away. Back away. Do not push. Do not push an issue. Same thing with cheerleader. They can come across as disorganized. Remember, we said squirrels in their own head. The more, the more stress someone's under, the more these characteristics pop up to the surface. Possessive and withdrawn when it comes to a caregiver under stress. And last and not least, overly critical because they're attempting to grab on. Now, how do we create some solutions for these situations? So, let's think outside the box a little bit. You have information now. You have information about the different styles. We talked about how to communicate with them, so we'll do a very quick review here. With the commander, be decisive, be direct, be clear, concise and precise. And their core question is answer the what. So, when you're creating a conversation with them, if you're going to walk into a commander's office and you know you want to ask for something, make yourself a little cheat sheet. Literally, no, I got to ask what, I got to answer the what questions that are going to come into their head. When it comes to conversation with the cheerleader, show energy, be enthusiastic, be conversational, ask for feedback. They want their opinion heard. They need to be heard and valued. Same thing, we look at the pace. Those are going to be your faster conversations. When you're speaking to the caregiver, let them know the reason why. They need to know the why behind things. If you give them the why, if you're patient, if you take your time, you relax and you let them digest the information. So, slow. If you're, if you are a cheerleader who's focused on emotions and people and you're talking to one of your colleagues that is a caregiver, just slow your pace. Dial it down a little bit. Match them with where you are. So, you play with your tone, play with your speed, but match them. And at times, when you become more skilled, and this is a whole nother training on communication, but you can actually draw them and pull them up a little bit if you're skilled with communication. Computer whiz, we said they're about information and data. You've got to give them the facts. You have to be conservative. You have to answer the how of the process. You be careful and be precise. You know, they want the information. They need to know how things are working. So, as an example, if I am a computer whiz and I am going to go into a commander's office, what should I do? Do I give all the 20 details? No. I'll bullet point it. I'll still give them the facts and the data, but I don't give all the details. Now, if you're writing that in an email, you do the same thing. So, think of, think of a blog or an email or a document where you might have the short version, which is the high view, and then the details. The commander might want the details. The computer whiz, I'm sorry, the commander will have the overview. The computer whiz will have the details. And for those that want to read both, they can. Conflict. There are three types of conflict. One is a conflict that we have with the different styles. So, we said, when you look at the diagonal, how do we bridge? How do we bridge between the computer whiz and the cheerleader? Well, think about this. They both have a commonality, which is detail and risk. One has a lot of detail, the other has very little detail. One is high-risk, the other one is low-risk. Where do we meet? You meet in the middle. So, a cheerleader would need to dial down some of the enthusiasm, some of the energy. If they have an idea that they're coming to a computer whiz, do some research, bring some facts and create a process. Lower the risk level, they'll be more receptive. Does that make sense? When it comes to a commander and a caregiver, what is the conflict? Facts versus emotion. A commander needs to come to the conversation and be more personable and less methodical, less factual and direct. Whereas the caregiver knows that it's not in that conversation for them to share all the stories. They could do that elsewhere with friends. But to match your style to the person you're speaking with. That's where emotional intelligence comes in, where you adapt. When I go into organizations and teach emotional intelligence, we actually practice some of these things and learn and do some scripting and role-play so that you can have these conversations live and understand them. Second type of conflict is a me-job conflict. That means if I'm not in the right place. When I was in the Army, one of the jobs that they gave me was in front of a computer in a room with no windows, with a stack of paperwork. And my job was to take the information from the articles, and it was high-level intel, and put it into little green boxes. Some of you might still remember those, little green boxes. And then those papers were sent over to the keyhole punchers that were down in the major computer room. Needless to say that I ended up with a breakdown. I wish that when I was in the service years ago, they would have done assessments to find the right role for people. Because the end of my service was when they actually asked me, hey Karen, here's options for you. You can work with the computers. You can work in the admin. Or I have a job as a non-commissioned officer. It's three hats to wear, education, social needs and women's care. What do you want? What do you think I picked? Last one. And that's where I had the opportunity to shine. Because very often, when we're in certain roles, we're not playing to our strengths. We're not playing to our gifts. And so, being able to understand what your gifts are and how to also bring out the gifts in your team members can help you with that. The third type of conflict, unfortunately, sometimes you have those that have a me-me conflict. That basically means that in a rare situation, in my style, I might be a, I might have a high level of commander and a high level of cheerleader. And I can't decide which one I want to use. It's rare, but it does exist. Because remember, we said, all four styles exist in all of us. How do we delegate? When we look to delegate, number one, it's understanding the person's skill sets, the person's talents and what they can do. But it's also making sure that if they need a reason, if they need information, we give them what they need. So, let's go back for a moment to the activities that we've done. And when I asked, were there any questions? There were no questions. Why do you think there were no questions? Anybody? Here's a simple thing. When you're speaking to a group, whether it is live, whether you're writing, look at the four styles and look at the four core questions. What? Who? Why? And how? If you can answer all four questions, you've given the room all the information that you need and you addressed all the different styles through your conversation. Once you address all the different styles through the conversation, you've now helped them with reasoning, with understanding and with knowledge of what needs to be done. That's how you minimize and that's how you also talk to a crowd. Time for a change. Certain styles don't do as well as others with change because they're missing information. And therefore, in order to support, if we are bringing in, we're going green. Hey, we're getting rid of, you know, different computer stuff. And for some people, they're not comfortable because they're used to the old way. And that change is something that's uneasy. So, for the commander, well, the commander's usually the one that's going to want to take the risk and lead with the change. Not a problem. The cheerleader, hey, it's something out of the box. They probably invented the idea. The ones that have more of the challenge are the slower pace because it takes time to enroll them. So, when it comes to being able to introduce change and help the caretaker, the caregiver, you give them the reason why. Why are we making changes? And what is going to be the benefit for the team and for the entire community? Now, how do you enroll? The computer whiz, what are they concerned with? They're concerned with the order and the exactness of the process. And if the process is working, what would be the reason to change it? If we change the process, it's going to rattle the boat. But what if we update, upgrade and improve? If we update, upgrade and improve, we're not really changing. We're making it more perfect, which caters exactly to their needs. So, those are some quick tips to help us bridge some of those gaps, understand different styles and be able to identify how to communicate with them, how to work with them collaboratively. Because as we started off by saying, that we can point out our differences, our differences will divide us. But when we can bridge that gap and find the commonalities, our commonalities will unite us. As people, we're not working with departments. We're not even working with teams. We're working with individuals. And individual people, when we can collaborate, when we can embrace, they are the ones that make the magic. So, I invite you to take this information, dig into it and reach out to your team members in a new way that allows you to communicate better, more effectively and with heart. Thank you. Now, to help anchor some of that, Parrish, do we have something for these lovely people?
Yes.
So, while, while you're getting ready for lunch, I have, I have an autographed copy for every single one of the council members of my book. There were a couple of questions earlier. One of them, which was very interesting, I think it was at the table here about, this is, that these type of assessments are also good for hiring. Yes, they are. They're good for many different things. They're good for your teams, for team development, they're good for hiring, they're good for screening. They're really good for even, you could use these in different ways, even in relationships, to be able to better understand and communicate with people.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you open to a specific page?
Her team's the only one who's actually going to read it.
The beauty about, the reading about that is that, the beauty about the book is that you can use, so the book's power conversations has a little mini-chapter on the information that we had here today. It also has information about the different generations, which is another program that I deliver. But it gives you the opportunity to pick a little topic, anything from walking into a room to making an impression, all the way to interviewing and diffusing arguments, et cetera, as little quick tips that you can take and practically use. I believe that you are now just getting ready for lunch, so I will, I will stay here for a little if anyone has any questions. And you know what? I'd love to take, Parrish, can we get, can we maybe get a nice team photo?
Before we break, just, we're going to actually, after this, we're just going to go ahead and get some food and then come back because we're going to be to work very much. So, Del is going to lead a conversation. And so, then we're ready for everybody back to the meeting.
Thank you very much.
I like this though.
Karen, thank you.
All right, folks, we're going to take a picture in the lobby. You want to mind your body? So, everybody can, yeah?
I can.
This part's gonna go away. This is gonna, we're gonna lower this down so it's like normal height because she was standing all the time. But if you want, we could actually, um, lower this down Eddie and slide it. Weren't we gonna slide it forward a little bit? We may wanna un-tape this again. No, I've got, I've got slack. We can just slide it up. And then, then the table, yeah.
I'm like, like Parrish?
That's been, working to lower it down. Yeah, it'll be, it'll, this, yeah, that can be close to them. And then, and then this is gonna drop down a whole foot. So it'll be, it'll be, you know, like this. Okay, so we'll just put it here. Great. Let's find Dr. Karen.
Good. Hey, hey, hey.
Down inside. Park, parking, Grand, Monte Carlo. Yeah. Thank you, Cory. Change me, it's good.
Yeah.
Highlight you on the bloodstream. I got us.
Yo.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah. That, that's it. You and I. I can make that work. It wasn't bad.
On the website? Like the behind the scenes.
I love chicken fingers. I love that. Hold it there. Even for a reading. Adele.
Yes. Mayor's going to start us.
This week? Hope to be. I'm going to get something to swallow. I'm leaning chin, pedal pouring here. I always, always. All right, everyone, we're going to go ahead and reconvene here and get started. We're a little behind schedule, so I think we can probably catch up. Love it. Thank you, Councilor Garland. All right, so the next up here on the agenda for today is item number three, which is the lunch, of course, which is what we're currently enjoying with our council priority discussion. And while Holmes is going to be our interim director of innovation and strategic management, is going to be facilitating this session, so I will go ahead and turn it over to her.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. It was a pleasure to be invited to facilitate a conversation with you and your colleagues about the areas of work that you would like to focus energy on. Before we start jump in, wanted to share that these are areas for the next two years that you would like to focus in. Dr. Jacobson said earlier that, you know, part of being leaders is moving from a team or a group that works together to being leaders that lead together. And so I hope that this conversation provides value for you in that aspect. It's also an opportunity to create understanding and to learn from each other and create awareness. It's not a session to disqualify any areas of focus or to establish any critical assessment of the areas of focus. It's really a time for receiving and simply put, for listening and for discovery. Mainly to share the areas that you would like to focus your energy on. So prior to today's session, you, some of you forwarded information to just help me organize a session here in regards to your areas of focus and areas of specific interest. And I took those, that information and organized them within the five thematic council priorities that we frame a lot of our work here in the city. So I did use your qualitative data to move towards this discussion. I'd like to first start with strong community connections. There was quite a bit of interest in equity and action and developing positive relationships between our community and our Tempe Police Department. So I'd like to just ask, you know, what aspects or what, what is it that raises your, your interest in those areas? And I'm looking at Councilmember Garland in regards to equity and action.
Well, I think we, I think it's making the policy that we've had for a while in the community, I think it's trying to let our community know what that equity and action is, because when I got in council, I didn't know what it was and what the group did. But using those policies to take that on to the community and making sure that we're using the equity and action in every single thing we do, like diversity on our boards and commissions and making sure that everybody in our community is involved in things that we do.
So you mentioned the outcome of diversity on board and commission. Are there other outcomes that other council members or you would see related to that area of focus for equity and action?
That involves training, involves, and are we specifically talking about public safety?
Equity and action and building trust, but I'll move to building trust earlier or in a minute, but equity and action.
No, I think, I think it's, it's the training, the understanding, you know, on the fundamentals, just to make sure that we're doing what we know our changing society is, is learning or accepting. And then be able to understand that training and then how it also integrates with what we're doing today.
A little bit to other council members in regards to what outcomes you might see or what areas intrigue you about equity and action and Council has already shared.
Well, I haven't been on very long, but I would like to see, when it comes to equity action, I would like to see when we have our diversity director in charge to make, see the implement of what we're planning to do in the city and how it's going to affect throughout the whole city. And, you know, just the whole game plan on that, because without that person there or persons, it's hard to accomplish what we want to do when it comes to that with diversity and improvement. So I really want to see that and how it's going to grow and work with them.
So you've mentioned some tactical things like training, having a plan, sharing the framework. Are there other advantages to focusing on equity and action for the community, maybe even as a result of two years of work with that high level focus?
People are engaged if they feel like they're included in on things, like a level way of everyone, so. Just participate in decision-making also.
Thank you. So I intentionally started with strong community connections because your workshop today started out really with about building relationships, knowing more about each other and how we can adapt to each other. So I want to move on to another area of focus that was shared in regards to building better relationships between Tempe residents and our Tempe Police Department, as well as transparency for our residents and citizens. So what, oh, thank you. Hard to hear me. Thank you. So what aspects of, sorry, thank you. So what else?
Yeah, two marks.
Two marks. Oh, I'll use those. Thank you. Hello again? Okay, just a moment. Thank you. Okay, so in regards to building up resident trust and relationships to Tempe Police Department, what are, what is it about it that raised your area of, of your interest regarding that and regards to, oh, sorry, okay, switching. I'll repeat it. In the area of strong community connections and building relationships with our residents and our police department, what aspects are of most interest to you in that realm?
Community policing.
Community policing?
Police officers to know their neighborhoods and neighbors, get to know their. So community, community policing and also so that neighbors know their police officers and officers know the neighbors, the certainty that they're working on, so they develop relationships and trust with one another.
Are there any other elements that intrigue you? And maybe we'll do this kind of passing the mic. Thanks, Tony. Thank you. Got it, Tess? Yeah, thank you.
Also, building back relationships with, with, with the communities that has been most affected by police, as like in the African-American community, the Native American, Hispanic community, that the building that, that bridge back together, because there's a lot of distrust between a lot of the minority communities and the poorer economical part of Tempe versus the other parts of it. So just trying to build that bridge back.
Senator Keating?
And you, before Ross. Tempeans have a lot of, have a lot of trust and faith in their police forces, and I think that's important to continue moving forward. I think the police department does a great job, and I like to continue to see them do this, to reach out to the community and even know what they're doing, how they're being proactive, how Tempeans can reach out for individual health that they, they need to acquire. So, you know, I think, you know, public relations is a huge aspect of any community that's being released.
Yeah, no, I, I would agree. I think it's that organic PR stuff, the involvement of not on duty, but off-duty police officers being involved in the community. I think that's strategically important, especially with our youth. I think we definitely with our public safety, just it's that starting with our youth. And it's not only just engaging with our community, but it's also an understanding of our police officers. It's, it's an organic relationship. And I think that transpires into potential, maybe that's a career path that I'd like to do. Also, I think that, you know, this council, just showing our support for our police officers in the job that their task can do, but also supporting the right tools and education and training all day long.
I think one of the things I was thinking about when it comes to support and showing support is we've talked a lot about what we're doing for taking the homelessness moving forward and talking about ways, and I know the councils talked about in the past, how do we put people, whether it's our home team, which is our homeless outreach group, or our CARE-17, or even some of our folks in our, kind of in our private security group, kind of to work when it comes to working on position more. Because a lot of, you know, when I would talk to, you know, police officers here, they would say, look, we're not, you know, we don't go to the academy to necessarily deal with homelessness. We go to deal with other things, you know, violent crime, carjackings and things of that situation. And so I think there's trying to find a way to make sure that when we're talking about who needs to be doing what within our organization, I think part of showing that right kind of support is making sure that our human services people and some of that private security is doing more of that frontline work when it comes to homelessness and leaving more room for our police officers to actually, you know, to fight crime and do the things that they actually went to the academy and trained in the first place. So I think that's part of showing the necessary support.
I think there's a lot, there's things that the police department is doing right now to build relationships in the community, the coffees with the cops that they have at the mornings that are really fun to go to and see the people come in and talk to them and want to build a relationship. But I also think it's, it's us helping with that also, for us getting to what our officers are doing and the activities that they're going to and really supporting them and promoting what they're doing. And it's not just the officers, I think.
We've learned a lot as a world, as a community in the last few years about, we've learned more about one another. And I would hope that we can apply that knowledge and more importantly, that understanding of one another as we grow and develop. And, and that means person to person, but also our processes, our structures and how we engage with.
Thank you. So when you talk about police relationships and residents, what challenges do you see in those areas? It's like passing the talking stick.
The kung shell. I, I'd probably go back to what Councilor Haas talked about. I mean, the, you know, different people have had historically difficult relationships with law enforcement, and I think a lot of what she talked about was exactly what I would say. It's a matter of, you know, kind of understanding where some of those challenges might be due to some of the, a lot of history that's taken place and not just talking about Tempe specifically, but frankly, just, you know, nationally and trying to find ways to better build bridges to those communities that they have had very historically difficult relationships with law enforcement. I think that's critical, you know, to, Councilor Keating's point, I do think, you know, we do surveys every year that talk about the trust score with all of our different departments. And the Tempe Police Department always has a very high ranking with our residents. But I think that there are, you know, communities that clearly feel like there needs to be more of a bridge built as we move forward. So I think just focusing on that will be critically helpful moving forward.
I also believe that we have to start with youth, you have to start younger. I mean, if you really want to build that bridge and build a culture difference, I think we have to start in, in grade schools and making the difference, because a lot of the times, and as I said before, in lower income areas, the only time that they see police is only when they're taking away their brother or their cousin or their father or somebody. It's always a negative impact. So we need to help and mitigate that by building our relationship with our youth so it grows with them. It's a culture thing that we change generation, not just on the surface, I mean, into the roots.
I agree with Councilmember Haas. And we talked to, I think it's a generational thing, and it's the cultural thing has to start at much younger age as far as how many are active with law enforcement, what law enforcement can and cannot do for you. Archie tells a story about growing up in Compton, California. Police Department was literally disbanded over corruption. So, you know, we have a, with the big witnessness of technology now, every citizen has the power to essentially hold everyone accountable. But that also provides us as a council and the police department as an organization, the opportunity to use that same technology to highlight exactly the good that they're doing in our community and how they're following rules and how they're being added value to our city and protecting the lives of our citizens. So I, again, I think the idea goes down to just increase public relations, get the word out there, let people know that Tempe Police is doing a great job.
Shifting a little bit on that same vein in regards to relationships, it was noted as an area of focus is the practice of transparency with our police department and our community. What areas do you think provide opportunities for that?
So I think, you know, I mean, something, you know, Adele, I know you were very involved in, as was Rosa Chavsky, was the Public Safety Advisory Task Force. I mean, talking about what really were seven or eight meetings that were each three hours in length, 22 people, and all done virtually due to the COVID-19 pandemic and the inability during that time to have people gathered in person. And so I think that presented a real opportunity, because there were people who were in those meetings who were kind of longtime Tempe residents and who've been on boards and commissions. And we have Councilwoman Chin, who was one of the participants. I, I think we're used to being part of those groups and being part of those structures. But then I think one of the things was we always, we also made sure to bring other voices to the table that historically it felt like, I'm not part of the decision-making processes when it comes to what happens at, you know, city, county or state. And so I think that was really critical in terms of having everyone in that room coming from a different perspective, but creating that kind of opportunity. Now, the, the task force has sunset since then, but we're actually still implementing those recommendations, that there's a dashboard online when it comes to transparency that shows exactly where we are when it comes to certain measures and certain things that the task force asked us to actively work on. So it's not a matter of them having to necessarily call me or call the council or call the city manager and say, hey, where is this? People can actually go online in real time and go to that data dashboard and see exactly where things are. And if something is behind where they think it should be, they can then call or email us and ask a specific question, and we can either explain or we can maybe accelerate what that goal happened to be. So I think that, you know, those are the opportunities that we always in the city have utilized to provide people of all different backgrounds with opportunities to speak and be heard. But I think when it comes to that transparency piece, that data dashboard is really, really critical that anyone 24 hours a day, seven days a week can actually go in there and find it exactly where we are when it comes to any of those performance measures.
Hi, Senator.
Sure, thank you. And the question was phrased as some challenges or opportunities? I think I'm going to underscore data in the sense that as, as a way to measure, as a way to examine both and simply not as a point of criticism, but also as a measurement of areas where we can improve or focus on, whereas in other areas, we feel that we're doing well or making significant progress in. So not as a gotcha or criticism, but more, let's do a holistic review and have a better understanding of what's been done and what's been done. do a holistic review and have a better understanding of what's been done and what's been done well, which there are many instances, but then also what we want to focus our energy on.
Thank you. One component of your discussion was brought about in regards to youth, starting early, starting younger, in regards to the relationships. There was an area of interest in regards to quality of life regarding building relationships with our school districts. And so what could we leverage there?
Yeah.
Besides work done, we can leverage other things.
I honestly believe just more education around it with our schools. I mean, the more we build the relationship within the school district, the younger, you know, a lot of it is, a lot of the focus when it comes to law enforcement and public services in the middle schools and the high school level, I think we need to start younger. I think the younger we hit, we start in kindergarten, we start at the beginning basis. We need to have some kind of structure around it from the day they walk into school until the day they graduate from high school. That is always encompasses a part of the educational structure instead of just doing it piece by piece. A lot of the kids, the only time they really get a real action is with DSR role. There should be other programs that we encompass in there, maybe fire, what this fire actually does. And, you know, sometimes they have like a field trip or one or two. But I think that the more education kids get at a younger age, it becomes a part of them. And it's not just the piece that they learn here and there. So I think that, I think we need to just dig dive deep and figure out a way to encompass that in our curriculum, in our schools.
Just to add to that, I think it is your opportunity to give the youth to educate. I think we, you know, even in our committee with opioid addiction, now we're trying to hit the fifth grader now because the fifth and sixth graders are the ones witnessing the transition of the middle school, grade school, and we're seeing these things happen. But it's in addition to just having the awareness and education on just that specific matter, it's also an opportunity when you have a police officer delivering the message to a school or to a health class in high school, which we do for the opioid and compression-only classes that we have going on, which by far, I have to tell you, they are the most impressive things that I share with other cities across the nation. But it's the building block of, maybe that's another avenue to have that education and coordination as time immerses of the things that a police officer has to do and the positivity effects and the education and other benefits that we might utilize to make those things happen.
I think for people with families and children in schools, the schools are a natural partner for many of our programs within the city because the schools become a center of information for the children also in their exposure to learning how to be in the world or learning how to relate to the world. So that becomes a natural partner. So I see opportunities in many aspects, as well as some of the programs that are somewhat connected to the schools like College Committee or.
So in regards to relationships, and you talked a little bit about rebuilding relationships and continuing that effort, you mentioned homelessness. And there was a note about the continuum of care as well as focusing on serving underserved populations. What could we gain momentum around with that in regards to our services, to our community, regarding homelessness, those who might be underserved? Or do we already have momentum that you might continue to build on?
I think we have really good momentum right now with Rosa's program, the 30, 60, and 90 Day. We actually have a plan now, see it live, execute. I just think that that's a way of inspiring for my homelessness and making changes that are necessary and have been necessary for some time. Also, just to get back a little bit on the police, you know, the police have been doing mandatory overtime for a long, long time. And people can't hold, we have that so long. And I think that getting our police force up and to where it needs as far as staff and health will be really, really helpful. So police officers actually have some more downtime and are able to come to work with a fresh, positive attitude, I think is really important. And I like the 30, 60, 90-day approach. And I think we're going to be a really positive drive with it. Thank you.
Just to add, I think our focus has to be on what we're doing right, what we're doing right now, and then how do we make it better? So my biggest worry is we're doing programs, but we don't have the appropriate staffing behind the scenes. We're not doing it correctly. We're not doing it efficiently. We're not doing it with streamlined. So it's staffing and technology that incorporate this to make a better system, whatever that may be. I think that we have to, in my opinion, slow down because we've done, as a council, we have opportunities for homelessness, drug addiction, a whole bunch of resources. When we talk about all these resources that we're laying out, now, in my opinion, is the time to evaluate all those resources and just kind of saying, what do you need to make your job more effective, more efficient? What technology needs to be implemented so that we can see the difference or retract the difference or we can, you know, whatever it may be. But I think that we need to start seeing or focus on those things.
I have one thing I have is that we need to do a regional. Because if we have a great program that we get going, Rosa's in there and she gets this phenomenal program in the city of Tempe. When it comes out that the city of Tempe has it, what do you think is going to happen to that program? Every single person from every other city that is not getting those, the services are going to come to our city. And what's going to happen? Our program may not work because it's too much. I think if we have to get, if we're going to do something, if we have to get on a regional and be on the same page, because we can't just keep putting, it's like kicking the can down each city, each town we do that. So we have to be on the same page as a region to get, I think, to actually get something really accomplished when it comes down to homelessness.
I was on a meeting yesterday just before our council meeting started on the Miracle Association of Governments. And the discussion was the continuum of care and homelessness and what we are all doing as a region and how we are going to be looking at, making any changes to that coming up in the future. And it is exactly like Councilmember Hodge just said, it is a regional thing that we're working on. I do think we've put a lot of things in place lately, and I think we are going in a positive direction. It's progress, not perfection. We're not perfect yet, but we are definitely making progress in how we are addressing the unhoused in our community. But it's not just them. I think we're doing a pretty good job right now. We're going to continue. And as Councilmember DeBarro said, you know, it could be more staffing also, but it's trying to approach this is not just getting them when they are on the street, but getting them before they get on the street and the care that we have that we are, and the departments that we have that are working on, helping us to make sure that that doesn't happen. We can try and get ahold of these people in advance, try to find ways to keep them from losing their house. So we're working and attacking it on many different levels. But I think the big thing right now is the group that, again, Rosa and Chelsea brought together, but the group that we have together, there is all different departments in the city and not just the city departments, but it's also states. There's other cities that are working with us and other nonprofit organizations that are helping us address this because we can't do it alone.
So you've mentioned the continuum of care. I'd like to shift a little bit about the opportunities on focusing on underserved populations. Is there any key area of concern there? Go ahead.
You have my first. Populations is our, is our people who are not homeless, but they're like on Section 8 and our area of like our seniors, just having low, very, very low income. I can, I can contest to that because what people don't know is I'm sitting here today, but if you go back 20 years, I was on Section 8 in the city of Tempe. So I understand a little bit differently how to, how that, that, that system runs and how hard it is for the person who is on that, on that system to get off of it and to actually find housing that actually works with you. So another thing that I was trying to look at is the people right before they get to, it's something that Councilmember DeBarro said, the people right before they get to the homeless parliament. Those are the people who are most affected, the people are our seniors and the people who are very, very low, low income, who are on the tipping edge, barely holding on to their, their housing, barely holding on to what they have, are in the system through DDFs and social security. Those are the people that we need to key into because those are the people are next on the line to be home sheltered and homeless. So it's not, it's not an everyday story that you find a council member who could sit here and say, yes, I was on DDF. Yes, I was on Section 8. Yes, I was a single mom raising my child. I know how hard it is. And I know we need to, in this way, if so many more of me out there, it's not going to make it to where I'm sitting at right now. And how do we get them to a place that they can be stable?
The main thing I was sort of thinking about was making sure that we are continuously working with and partnering with our residents. Because this is, you know, it's progress, not perfection. I mean, it's not a problem that you're ever going to completely, you know, you're not going to ever completely eliminate homelessness. It's just not going to happen. But I think the challenge is working with our residents to let them understand exactly what we're doing and making sure that they are kind of partnering with us and understand the solutions that we're currently kind of involved with. And they do, you know, we have a very kind of front-facing approach to making sure that we're pulling in residents and advocates in our nonprofits to make sure that they're aware of exactly what we're doing, the 30, 60, 90, the plan, as Councilmember Vice Mayor Adams talked about. So, I mean, I think that's really, I think it's really important. I think it's just making sure that people understand that sometimes people say, well, you know, I want you to do more and I want you to be more humane. But then if you want to put a shelter or a facility next to their home or next to their neighborhood, it's like, whoa, 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 not here. And I think the biggest thing we have to let people understand is that we have to try to, we have to find places where a 42-square-mile landlocked community, and we're going to have to partner with our residents. We talk about stepping up to get things done. It's not a matter of us just voting on things. It's about residents actually accepting the fact that we're going to have to take some of those steps. And they're going to need to perhaps take some of those facilities or 20 beds here and there, kind of in or around their neighborhood. So I just think that's really critically important is, you know, the work that we do, that we continue to engage with them. But they're also going to have to work with us because the problem can't be solved just by city hall. They also have to be partners at the table when we try to find ways to solve this problem.
So going back to my theme of the day, you would think I would have been cheerleader in that personality contest. Again, it's communication. People are shocked at the level of services that the city offers. I can't tell you how many times I've given out CARE-17's number or the HOPE team's number. And people are just astounded that this is something the city offers. And if there's things that they need that the city doesn't offer, they'll get you in touch with state or federal resources. So people, I don't think are aware of just the level of, of services that are available to them in underserved communities, that are struggling. The city of Tempe is a compassionate community. We're really willing to try to give the help we can when we can. I think it's just getting the word out there and get people to know about it and to believe in it, that everyone's trying to do the best for everyone and making sure that we all, they all try to live in stability and dignity.
And I absolutely agree with everything that's been said. And to the point of communication, that is the effective way to understand what we're doing and how we're doing it. Once again, in my opinion, it's also behind-the-scenes stuff, the services that make the services really worthwhile, investment in that. I think often we, we forget about our, our east and west side of Tempe, which are those areas where, oh, that's still Tempe, yeah, that's still Tempe. And the investment you put in those areas, the investment within those streets, the investment within the sidewalks, the parks, those little things, the feeling that we're investing, that we're caring about that. You know, downtown's cool and everything like that. Downtown makes the engine run to help all those communities out, to help those programs out, to help the behind-the-scenes stuff out. It's the communication, how we're doing it. I, I know we go above and beyond my opinion, but I'm like still scratching, like, I know that everybody likes sensational news and, you know, that triggers them to watch it, you know? It's, you have to get to that point of what's going to get someone's attention, you know? How is the story presented? How are we picturing it? How are we doing all these things? I think those add value to get our message out. How are we using our network and programming? I even told these guys back in last night, maybe we should have 80's Night on council. We all dress up just to get some attention to the council. Try anything. It's like the Savannah Bananas kind of a dirty. But yeah, that's what.
Something that Councilmember DeBarro get on and also Councilmember Keating talked about as well, I think, is, is that kind of communication and some of the community education. So when we talk about wanting to revitalize, you know, refresh, you know, Tempe, or talking about revitalizing downtown, or even a lot of the projects to get approved, because development projects many times get characterized in a very negative light and people have very negative opinions of developers and zoning attorneys and these things. But the reality is, a lot of the development we're talking about is what generates the sales tax revenue, the bed tax revenue, the property tax revenue that we need to actually provide additional services for the residents living in the city. The more people that are coming and spreading out that tax base and the more money we have in our general fund, that's what enables us, you want us to hire more home outreach folks or hire more CARE-17 members or hire more people when it comes to public safety, police, and fire, medical rescue. That's what allows for us to do that. There's sometimes a tendency to say, well, you know, I like the way the Tempe was back in 1982 when there were a lot fewer people here. But the reality is, it's not 1982, 24, it's 2022, and we have to keep up with the times. And if you're not moving forward, that means that other cities and towns are frankly passing you the process. And so if we don't find ways to diversify that tax base, it just means that people who are in here are going to end up paying more and more trying to maintain a high level and high quality of services that people here have come to expect and frankly deserve. But I think that that's what we have to do also when it comes to the communication part. It's explaining to people when we're approving a lot of these projects, we're moving forward in the right kind of most productive way for our community, but it also is generating a lot of necessary tax revenue that pays for all of these salaries and allows for us to beef up a lot of the services that people actually really care about.
When you consider areas of focus to put your energies towards over the next couple of years and through your systems and your approach as a council, I want to shift to core services. What opportunities are we seeing with our core services? Or what areas where we might have some gaps that would be energy you would like to see focused on?
I can see his hand like.
I am.
No, that absolutely is what I feel this council has to invest time in, is the stuff that we have to provide for our residents, the trash pickup, the streets, the public safety, the community outreach programs, the parks, the services that make this community run. We have to stop, slow down, invest time in making those services more efficient, more effective, and staffed appropriately. We absolutely need our department heads to figure out what are those needs in those departments. I know that we can work hard and we can do things, you know, with one person, but are we doing it effectively and efficiently? I can only say that. I feel that in my other job. And I'm understaffed over there and everyone's understaffed over in Phoenix. But, and to be honest with you, there was a, there was a price to that. There's a price of efficiency. There's a price of customer service. There's a price of, of doing things that are going to heighten and lighten the productivity and what Tempe is all about. So I'm always about, when people come to Tempe, they see there is an absolute difference in customer service. And I absolutely believe we have to invest our time in those core values of what we have to provide for our residents. I know we do some great external things. Those are great, and I know they have benefits. I really do. But we do have to make sure our core is more productive and more efficient.
I was thinking too, and I totally agree with what Councilmember DeBarro said. I mean, I think that's a lot of what the Refresh Tempe Initiative is all about, along with just the general core services he's talking about. I think about a lot of the things that are really critically important to be, like, let's talk about affordable housing support to this entire council. But I think about the purchase of the Food City we did back in Apache and Dorsey back in December of 2021. Those are things that are very kind of big-picture ideas. We have to spend a substantial amount of money to get something done that's very productive. And I think our residents largely, especially folks in that neighborhood, really supported what we did. But I think we can only really do those things if they feel like we're doing kind of what they would call the blocking and tackling well. If the streets are well-maintained, if my alley looks good, if I feel safe in my park or in my community or walking downtown, I think our staff does an exceptional job at all those things. But I totally agree that the focus on core services, and we're talking about like a Refresh Tempe Initiative, making sure we're spending initial money to, you know, fix the streets, make the alleys as beautiful as possible, bring all the parks up to exactly where we want them to be. I think those are the things that create space for people. I think those are the things that create space for people to say, as long as you're taking care of all the basics, I don't have a problem if you guys want to kind of do some different things and reach a little bit as council members. But the basics have to be done well first before we can get to that place. And I feel we've largely been able to do some of those more interesting kind of thought-provoking projects because the basics are being handled very well by the team here. But I do think that that's a consistent focus that we need to have, like Councilman DeVarra talked about, if we want to continue to reach our even larger heights.
One of the basics that a community may see, but was specifically brought up by one of your colleagues, was traffic. You mentioned streets and aesthetics. What is it about traffic that we might be able to build upon? Not literally in regards to development, but what is it that we're already doing that we could continue? And where would I find other opportunities?
You know, I, I like that we are committed to, deeply committed to multi-modal transportation. Obviously, the streetcar coming online is, is a big issue for our downtown area. I know we're adding more bike infrastructure, or whatever we do repaving, things like that. We're hopefully going to finish the clean talk, you know, before I leave office would be nice. So I, I like that we're being, you know, I want to see things like additional bus pullouts, expanding orbit lines. Anytime we can get a car off the road, it's beneficial for the city. Traffic is difficult, right? I mean, traffic is always going to be there and it's, it's seemingly always going to get worse. But we can do things around the edges that alleviate some of the stress on our system while planning for a future where we're able to actually ban that curve down due to the density in our downtown area, the increased access to all the transportation. So I think there's a lot to be done in the traffic space. It's just, like everything, it, it's, it's going to take time. It's slow, it's going to take a cultural change that is already, you see, starting with younger folks are more inclined to walk, to, to ride a bus, to riding a scooter, electric scooter specifically. And, you know, I think that's a positive thing for the city. So I think the traffic department's doing a great job as far as providing Tempe with options to get around the city. We're still not at twenty minutes today, don't believe anyone that says that we are. But I like the aspirational goal and I do think we'll, we'll get there someday.
But I think we can do, help us also be the stimulus to businesses to have more bike riders and bus riders and other, I've seen that in other cities, that they actually give, they built it into their check so that they can ride them to train or to whatever they have in that system that, that, that the businesses help. And the city actually does a fifty, fifteen percent margin than we give that incentive. So I think the more we incentivize as a city to help with traffic, people who work close to downtown and live close to downtown can ride the, the city transportation. I know it's a little hot in Arizona, but you're not going to get away from it no matter if you drive, walk, or catch a bus. So I just think we can help with that with incentivizing.
Just to add to that, I think COVID really got us into a better track. To be honest with you, coming home with a lot of offices and corporations and incentivizing that. In fact, I, today, I would expect more traffic, you know, especially in our downtown area, where it really hasn't, I haven't seen that increase. I remember when State Farm was dumping out, you saw it and you seen it. And it's not having that effect anymore. I mean, it's, it's still busy, but it's not the effect. I think incentivizing those things as we work as councils is, is things like, when you have a multi-house or multi-family building, doesn't have enough room for separate office space. We've had, I talked about that last night, of the DIM area, you know, inside some of these builds to have that area to work, to have maybe a ground floor area for a community resource. We have projects like the Cool sac, that is a non-vehicular agreement, but they have the open space there for networking, for working off the light rail. I mean, we're doing all this stuff, people are utilizing all the transportation options. We need to continue on building on that. And are we going to have traffic in Tempe from time to time? Oh, yeah, we are, because Tempe does events, we do big things, and that's going to happen. We do it well, in my opinion, when it comes down to mitigating traffic after the event. That's one of the expertise that I am so proud of, our police department and our traffic, public works department, because they know how to mitigate those things more effectively, in my opinion, in the city. So I think we have a lot to build on, but those are some ideas.
Thank you. So the traffic is something that's very, a big concern to me. And I know that we have not had enough police officers to enforce drag racing, speeding. I'm getting a lot of complaints from the neighborhoods about what's, what's happening in their, in their, on their streets, in their communities. Safety is obviously the most important thing. I think we need to get more creative about how we slow traffic down. And I think speed bumps would be a great, great thing to add. And also more stop signs and things like that to when our community reaches out to us. Because the community members are experts in their neighborhoods, not us. Because they live there and they see it every single day. So I think we really need to pay attention to the participation of our neighborhoods and, and getting, getting their needs brought, brought up, brought forward. Also, some areas of the city do not have orbit. And I think that we need to expand the orbit lines because I don't think it's fair for some people to have orbit and others to not. We have a lot of aging in place folks, for example, in Salt and P. And, and they are not, they don't have access to orbit. And I think that would also help reduce traffic.
I, I've heard this conundrums come up in many different ways. On one hand, people want events and gatherings and activity in Tempe. Well, that will bring some traffic. And I'm defining traffic as congestious, which sometimes that's an indicator of great things happening. And I, and I've also seen over the years that where complaints occurred over certain events that draw traffic, those complaints dissipated because they don't want to give up the event. So to Councilmember Keating's point, multimodal is, is here to stay. And we need to encourage that. Also, Vice Mayor Adams mentioned that we need to expand access to ways to, to help people get to the hubs that Tempe has invested in, right? We've invested in streetcar, metro rail, mid-orbit, many different methods of getting people out of single occupancy in a car. I would ask our residents and stakeholders to, to challenge themselves and find ways to contribute to, how do we make it better for all of us?
Shifting a little bit to health and safety, specifically regarding domestic violence as well as rise in violent crime, because it was indicated rise in violent crime. What needs to shift?
About to start with that. I think that we need to have more social workers respond to the calls from the police officers when there's domestic violent calls. That they are trained to diffuse things as, as opposed to escalate things. And I just think that would really help our officers and I would help, I think it would help our domestic violence situations and give them the resources that they need. The average woman takes seven times before she actually leaves a domestic violence situation. So it is a repeated situation oftentimes. And I think if they can get to know the social workers and establish more trust, they might feel like they're able to make changes that might be necessary or work it out if, if that's the case. What was the second part of the question? Yes, I'm very concerned about violent crime. Our violent crime rate has, has gone up. And I think part of that is, well, I think it's a lot of different things. But it has gone up and I think that we need to continue to do a lot of outreach and increase our police force so that we have, feel safe in the community. Also, our downtown area, I know that we have more team members and things like that. We're, we're communicating more effectively with them. And it takes a lot to, to keep violent crime down. But I think we're, we need to really focus on that and not lose sight of that, that goal.
I think what's a great program that we have is our Care Seventeen is starting to go out with our officers on calls like this. So we do have a social worker sentiment that wants to be there. A team that will be there to help with the call that the police officer makes. And the great thing about Care Seven is it's not just going out at that moment, but it's the follow-up afterwards to make sure that persons continue to be safe and that they get the help that they need. So I think what's great is we've had the Care Seven program before it because we were able to be funding it and to increase the staff. We are now able to have something twenty-four seven that's going to be working with our officers. And I think that makes a big step forward for us to really be able to try to help out a little bit in that, in that situation.
I'll use your words, are there other step forwards in regards to crime, domestic violence, diversity of public health and safety?
Well, so I'll talk about violent crime first. And I, I think it's a positive that one of the recommendations that came out of the Urban Safety Task Force is we do have social workers and other people other than uniformed police officers responding to certain situations which don't necessarily require a police officer and frankly, isn't their job really when you think about law enforcement? So that would free up officers to be able to, to concentrate on what we really need them for is protecting us from, you know, personal and property crimes. It's a very serious thing. It's one thing to have your car stolen, it's another thing to have, you know, be assaulted. So I am certainly concerned with the violent crime increase, which I've also heard about anecdotally. And I think we can do it if we can to empower our police department and to, to address it while also giving them the freedom to do so because we're taking away some of the other tushers responsibilities that just kind of landed on their plate from the lack of somebody else to handle it. So I'm very proud of the Urban Task Force as we do this that. For domestic violence, the one thing I want to say is, I mean, there, there are resources available on the city website and they're easily found. I would like to shift, not the conversation, but the way, the way we talk about domestic violence. Let's say, domestic violence, the domestic abuse. You know, the cycle of abuse isn't just physical. It starts immensely, emotionally, the process of devaluation. There's love bombing and then there's, eventually it becomes, it, it always reaches a point of violence. And we don't, I don't think that people understand that this isn't, if, if you just punch your partner one day, that, that, that is a commodity, that is a commodity either, right? That, that is a process that starts a long time prior. And I would like to see focus on that, on helping people recognize what is a pattern of abuse in a relationship? What is unhealthy behavior? How to recognize when you're being manipulated, things like that. Particularly younger folks that are in new relationships that don't know how they're supposed to, how they're supposed to be. You know, maybe you think somebody loves you, but they're constantly putting you down or making you feel bad about yourself, so down, you're chasing their affection, their approval. And you suck in the cycle and it repeats and repeats and repeats and eventually ends up in a violent situation. So as a city, I'd like to see us focus, in fact, I also got to talk to the mayor about this. We do declare October every month, you know, domestic violence awareness month. I would like to change that to domestic abuse awareness month because some of the most painful scars of these relationships isn't the punch or the slap, it's the years of, of intentional and emotional abuse.
So ballistically, a, a, a big and tough animal to, to kind of get a lot around. I think when you talk about all these things, there's, there's resources that we can do and we are doing to help out that process. Things like Care Seven, which is a huge value to our community on a variety of different non-medical emergency type of situations, to have counselors out there readily available with nine-one-one. The fact that using counselors with PD possibly for domestic violence and helping mitigate those calls. But it also starts in the law room, detecting that dispatcher, or having dispatchers in the law rooms that are, you know, counselors, so to speak, that can actually help field, field calls, field calls that can de-escalate an event potentially or lower the potential of that happening. I think all this stuff, in my opinion, though, is a cultural thing that we have to start implementing. I mean, probably one of the best things we've done is candy. And, and it's always one of those questionable things, should the council do it, is pre-K. Pre-K has value for a lot of families that are under the income level to have that leg up. So you have the opportunity of your youth going to school and you have the opportunity for the parents to actually get a job or to manage things more efficiently without taking two things at once. Those things add value. I think the education within schools and the programs add value. You talk about police officers and relationships and the views and don'ts and, and, and respect and all these things. I think that's just one of those things, again, that you can start at the, at the younger age to help change and solve a problem within your community. And at the other day, it's a tough animal because situations go around differently. Sometimes you have a situation where it doesn't seem like this domestic violence and the police officers or counselors in a wrong position. Calls can often go south quickly. And so it's a real catchy area to know how to navigate it. But I think we do have resources out there to help.
I'd like to pivot really quick here in regards to sustainable growth and redevelopment. There were some aspects in regards to dog parks and trees and cool seal for pigments as well as county island annexation. What aspects of this might intrigue you for an area of focus?
So I have to start with dog parks.
The truth is, I'm a petty and a.
I know, I'm going to touch on both. I know, I'd like to be guessing. Anyway, so the dog parks, I think that the dog parks are, we have a lot of dog parks in northern Tempe. And I, if you go to those dog parks, you'll see people really interacting with one another. It's not just about the dogs. I mean, the people get to know their neighbors, they have, they have fun together. I mean, the dogs are so playful and they entertain everyone. It's a really happy place. And I would like to see more dog parks. I've been preaching this for four years down in more south Tempe also. So I don't think that they are getting the dog parks that they deserve. So it's a really, I just want to really emphasize, it's such an important way to bring your community together and get to know your neighbors. Otherwise, we drive into our houses, we drive into garages and we shut the door. And I know that a friend of mine lives in Chandler and every morning their whole neighborhood goes, takes their dogs to the park. Every morning they get, they get to talk about their, you know, what they're going to do during the day. The dogs get to play, it's, it's helping for everyone. Second, the second is the county annexation.
Then we're room for the dog parks.
Yeah, the dog park up there too. We're also encouraging our developers, they're coming in to put in dog parks in the developments. So that's another way for people like that, little parks and things to get to know each other. The county annexation is a very high priority for me. And I think that we can keep it going. I, I know that there's another interested party next to the current development at Camden on, on east side of the county island. So we can continue to cascade that and develop that whole area. It'll really improve Tempe, North Tempe's values and also improve the community of their NGO. And so the county annexation is, is a very, very important aspect of our city. It's, you know, we're landlocked. So to be able to bring that sixty-eight acres back to the, into the city is like a huge advantage. And it also generates a large tax base. And those of you that have spent time on the county island know that there wasn't, there wasn't a lot of good things happening over there. And it's really, it's really changing now with the, the development. So.
Councilwoman.
Thank you. I have to mention a conundrum that we have, right? We have a tree canopy goal, which I think is very important. We, I think it's important to have open or green space. At the same time, we are in a water crisis. So we have to be mindful and get creative about how to increase our shade structures in conjunction with some trees. Thankfully, and, and some of you may have heard recently that, that Arizona and a few other states may need to reduce their dependence on the Colorado River. Thankfully, the city of Tempe only depends on the Colorado River or Colorado River at six percent of our use. Whereas some of our neighboring cities are at seventy-five and fifty-three percent because we have introduced conservation efforts and incentivized lower use for a long, long time. And that's great. And we should continue that. But at the same time, we have a conundrum when it comes to shade, which is desperately needed, and then water conservation. So just to be mindful of that.
Okay. Before I turn it back over to the mayor to continue your agenda for today, I just want to thank you. Really wish and hope that your sharing with each other would inspire you in regards to how you build your leadership team. in regards to how you build your leadership team, your processes, your systems, the way you organize yourselves. And so just thank you for joining in this conversation and working so hard at moving Tempe forward. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks so much, Wydell. Appreciate it. So I guess, so really quick thing here, I wanted to maybe take things out of order, but I wanted to check first. I've talked to a couple of folks, as I'm allowed to do, with the meeting law rules, about item number five, which is the council committee structure. A lot of what I'd heard from at least the two folks that I had talked to was that there wasn't as, I put this on the agenda originally because we have, you know, two new council members and we're starting. And when we actually went into this council committee structure, we talked about kind of doing a check-in every couple of years to make sure that what we were doing was actually working and also to make sure that the two new members had the opportunity to really have full input in this process. And so there was some conversation about whether or not we wanted to stick with the council committee system, whether or not the current groups that we've been working under for the last two years work for people, and then to sort of being able to sort of throw it open and see what people say. But I was going to say, if people are generally feeling comfortable with the current configurations or current groups, then we could just simply talk about who's going to serve on which groups and pair people up. This might be a pretty short conversation, but I still wanted to make sure that I could put this on the agenda so if anyone has any concerns or says, hey, I don't like this structure, I want to suggest a couple of tweaks, that everyone has a full opportunity to participate and add their input. So I'm looking at Councilor Richin, I'll let you go first.
Well, I'll start. Turn it on, I think we're in silence.
Thanks.
Sure, somebody.
Got a deep platform.
Many people. Well, as we've learned today, I have a certain organic communication style and my first question will be, can we start with the objective? I'd like to know, and I knew what the structure was previously when I served, but not the recent configuration. And reading notes about the configuration, I'd like to just have a discussion about what are we trying to accomplish and then maybe pulling the best parts of what occurred in the different halls and go from there.
Sounds good. Let's see, so Keely, I know you were the one who was kind of giving the original presentation on this item and I want to make sure we move this. I know Councilor Khaj has to leave a little early today, so I wanted to make sure that she was able to actively participate in this. So Keely, if you can come up and I guess just give us a little bit of an overview and then we can kind of talk, but I think this would probably only take 15, 20 minutes and want to make sure that we get out of here on time and perhaps even, so.
Thank you. Well, and I'll buy some time for them to get the presentation off by saying that I didn't actually address that question in my presentation or the memo because it sort of predates me, honestly, but my understanding and just to get the conversation going is kind of twofold. I'd say some people look at them more, some members seem to look at them more as incubator for new policy ideas and a place to flesh that out and create policy ideas that are brought forward to the council for full consideration. And secondarily, I think some people look at them more as a place to monitor the implementation of other things that have already, the council's already adopted, priorities that the council already is undertaking and the staff is implementing. So it's sort of a blend of those two, those things. That's what has been my understanding just from watching this process take place, but I think that you guys should address that directly since they're your council committees.
Councilor Keating?
Yeah, so, you know, I put brevity in my paper. I want to keep the committees the way that they are. I mean, I don't remember if you were here when you were under the working group structure.
Yeah, the old one.
Yeah. And, you know, as those that were here know, that it created a lot of issues with the staff. There was, at one point, I think there was like 27 open working groups, multiple meetings a week in your working groups. So we went to the committee structure to kind of bring all that in and kind of sign subject matter areas to individual council members. You can see what we have up here, sustainable, eligible communities, we're post writing this in economic vitality, human services and community safety. And I think, you know, what Keely said is absolutely correct. I see my committee as, as both an incubator for new policy ideas, but also kind of an oversight of the current policy that happens to fall into that. And to me, it seemed much more structured than the working group system. I found it to be more streamlined and I found it to be frankly more satisfying to work on. I'm very pleased with how the committee system has worked out and I've understood that there are some concerns as far as stakeholder and public participation, but I think there's ways around that we can, that we can improve those. So we have two new council members coming on. I would like to stay with that system and the catalog, something else to get in the future. This is the second time we've rehashed this decision that was made a couple of years ago now. But I'm always welcome to do that if we give our new council members an opportunity to participate in the system and they find that maybe it's not for them, there might be some sort of hybrid system or some other way that we can address the city business. I'm just putting it out there right now, I do not want to go back to the working group structure.
Go ahead and go to the next slide, just, these were the issues that were discussed at the last council retreat and one of those was actually requiring an annual reassessment. So that's part of the reason we brought it forward today.
We were to that one today.
Yeah. Let's go to the next slide, sorry. Okay, so the.
I'm just going to move the two, Keely, Councilor Barlow, but she didn't lose your thoughts if you want to go.
I was just going to say, you know, this is my first opportunity to have a program like this presented, because we want the council, we moved to this. The thing I really like about the structure that we have right now is I like the transparency, the openness and the ability that we have to have stakeholders come in. I would, do wish there was more opportunity for back and forth conversation, but I think at least this time when we've switched to this program, or at least I think there's still ways for us to move forward and improve it. But I really like the structure now and Joel will have me, I'd still like to partner with him because I think we've got a really great.
Well, I was going to say really quickly, and I'll give this to Councilor Khaj as well. The two things that I, granted, I really looked at the councils to see how they feel about this structure because, you know, by kind of, not statute, but by practice, I'm not a member of any committee, I'm just sort of the floating person that goes between committees. It's helpful if there's something I need to come in on at some point, or for whatever reason, a council member can't make it and you need a second person to have a forum so that I would show up to really help to make sure you could still have a meeting and all of the staff at the outside, people who are there can still continue to push whatever policy forward. I like, I like the structure because I think, when I went back and I looked at the, we have three council committees now, I think it's a lot easier for staff to manage that is Councilor Keating talked about, having 20 plus open groups, which does allow for you sometimes to get a little bit more specific about that group, but the problem tends to be it's a lot of staff time to make sure that they can sort of follow all of what's going on and have the clerk's office, which is one of our smallest departments at the city, have someone at all of those meetings actively taking notice to make sure we're in compliance with state statute. The other thing is too, I think for a lot of our external partners, the people that we work with and have to bring in as experts and people that we want to align with on certain key issues, and what are the concerns before with the working group structure? And I actually worked under both during my time when council was that there were a lot of our outside partners and you have 20 plus meetings or 20 plus working groups, it's harder for the public to attend and therefore the process lacks a little bit of transparency. Not because the council and staff is seeking to create a more opaque process, but it's just the sheer number of meetings becomes very hard to staff, even if you're an external group just trying to manage and sort of maintain knowledge about what's going on. So, you know, that's my kind of perspective on the committees, but no, but I appreciate Councilor Richin wanting to have this conversation. It's precisely why I wanted to put it on because you were like I, as a computer whiz is, want to know all the process and I'm the same way, so. Oh, we all, my bad.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much. I remember the other working group because I was on a lot of the committees. I was on a lot of them and it seemed like we got a lot done because there were so many going at the same time. I wasn't a part of council, but I was also one of the community representatives that came and elected office in another position. I just want to say I like the system we have going on now and Randy, if you don't mind, would you mind recommending me first? I would love to be a part of it with you.
Send Amy your resume.
I'm going to board a worker.
Thank you.
Councilor Richin?
Well, I didn't expect this to be a proposal.
I didn't.
So when I asked at the outset what the primary objectives were, what I'm trying to begin at is, how do we want to conduct these? When I, the working group, I agree was cumbersome and I think the sheer number of working groups affected productivity. But here's what I am hoping for in how we use these is to have informal exploration of ideas with key stakeholders and that there's transparency. So that's what I'm getting at, that whatever we land on, and I'm not, I don't have any hard preferences on one model or another, except I'm looking for productivity, efficiency and inclusion.
I agree. Well said. Yes, Councilor Keating?
I just want to speak to that. I think, I think you're spot on there. I think the committees and certainly.
Sorry.
You were correcting the words that you said. You know, certainly, I don't, I didn't watch your guys' committees, no offense, but my committee, we did, that's how we used it. We used it as kind of an informal exploration of policy, we're able to, stakeholders and staff, they can tell us what we can and cannot do, but maybe ask them for future correction. But I think the committees are very much what you make it. They can be very busy, they can be not very busy. It's just like, it's just like city council, right? It's what you make it and it's one of those levels and one of those organizations that can be pretty much anything you want it to be. So the committee is the eye of the, eye of the committee members, essentially.
And if I may, because I realize that I'm of a group that likes to be very precise, if we could use the language that it's not your committee because there may be other council members that may want to participate or provide some input or whatever it may be, so that we feel a little bit more included in that.
By him, but I get to be call your committee by.
Okay, that's fair.
So let's see, Keely, I'll go back to you. Can you maybe go back to?
First option.
The first option potentially?
Jason, can you go backwards one? Sorry. Yeah.
Actually, what I was looking for too was the, because I think Councilor Richin's comments covered all that very well about the engagement with the public and stakeholders and Councilor Keating talked about, you know, look, your committee can be as busy or as not busy as you want it to be, but given all the things we have going on in the city, I'd probably expect all of the committees would be packed with items. I guess, I'd like to go back to the slide, maybe Jason, where we talk about what the existing committees are so we can all look at those and.
Second slide, one more.
Talk about if that's it, those all still make sense. So previously, let's see, so who was on sustainable, that was Vice Mayor Adams, worked for the credit for economic vitality, that was Councilor Keating previously, and human services, community safety was Councilor Garland and Councilor Barrow. So I guess, I just, now, you're right, there were some proposals here. Is, are people comfortable, first of all, with these three committees? Are there any changes or something, wording changes, things additions, or are you saying we're good with these?
Good.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay.
I said I don't know.
Oh.
Right.
You don't know, she don't.
Right, exactly.
She don't know. Well, I would say too, now, Keely, to Councilor Richin's point, if we, if we did go with these currently and, you know, she came back or another council member came back and said, hey, I think we need to change the name of this group or add something else in, that would be allowed, I would assume. Then we just have to come to the council during a work study and say, we're suggesting a change or a different scope of work.
Mr. Chairman, I think so. I know we actually had to adopt rules changes in the regular committee, or the regular council meeting, but we don't actually have them named in the rules, I don't think. So as long as you all had consensus about the change in topics, I think we could do that and just maybe report out at like a work study session. But, but yeah, I think that's one of our main things, we want to make sure you want these same topics and, which we weren't sure, hoping the last conversation maybe would inform that conversation.
Okay. So it sounds like, you know, basically by kind of recapping a little bit, it sounds like council's comfortable staying with the committee structure. There was some conversation about, you know, if there are suggested tweaks or things that we need to do to provide even more transparency to the process and make sure that our external partners can fully take, you know, take part in these meetings in terms of ideas and feedback and everything, that would also be good. I'm trying to think of what else you might need from us, Keely, or any other council comments, I don't want to close this off prematurely, but.
I'll just raise two issues that, and it sort of was touched on by somebody, I don't remember who said it, but I do think that the committees, there's one committee in particular that has a lot of interest from the public and it does create a lot of staffing workload and, I mean, and that's fine if that's how you want to keep it, but if you wanted to distribute topics differently so that maybe there's more, you know, more of the public showing up, because it's a, it's a pretty intensive, it's almost like running a regular council meeting to run the, the human services and community safety committee because of how many people show up and want to comment and so that's been a very labor intensive. But it's, they're, you know, I think they've done a lot of great work, so, and good stuff has come out of that, obviously, so, but that was just something for you to consider. Again, we can handle it from a staffing standpoint if you want to keep it that way, but we just wanted to make sure the other people from the other committees kind of knew that was something we were dealing with. And then the other issue I would just say on stakeholder involvement, there has been some issues that have been raised about that, but I think there are ways, there are ways that we could work with you to even agendize more ability to have that back and forth dialogue by having on your agenda that certain stakeholders are going to be like on a panel or be part of that meeting. It is in some of your work plans already to have boards and commission members in your, your meetings. And so we think we can address that under this structure if that's something I can still have concern to some of you.
No, I think that's very, I think even bringing in the board of commissioners, you know, they've been part of those meetings that relate to the areas of the topics that we're talking about, I think that's probably outstanding, even if it's virtual whenever those times are. I like to say with even the public safety or the human services, community safety meeting, I know we've had two big topics that have gotten a lot of attention, so, but they still stay in that, in that category and at the end of the day, they come like everything else that we've gone through, especially me and the council for the time I've been here, topics come, topics go, and the workload comes and goes. So I kind of, I kind of would say, as, and it will kind of get near one topic to go on, that we're actually probably going to be, you know, settling down with it too, so.
Do you have outstanding questions already, Randy? Council, anything else that you'd like to add, any, I mean, any concerns, this is the last time we can actually talk about this because nothing is ever really a closed issue, but, and I don't mean that badly, I mean, in a good way. Yes, please.
And also, we all have a staff at this. This all has to come back to the council. So if people want a discussion, you know, and to have a robust discussion, it always comes back to the council board then. It's not, not to say you can't be in tune to it, yes, you can be in tune to it, you can even have a coffee talking of the stuff of your own, for your own information and at the end of the day, you can have that conversation at that work study.
Any other comments, Councilor? No. Keely, what, moving forward here, like what's your next step then?
I think just wanted enough direction, honestly, for Councilmember Keating, the committee he sits on, to be able to meet, because I know they're anxious to meet. And so we wanted to just solidify, if you want to keep the current structure and the current topics, which it sounds like you do, then I think, Mr. Mayor, you need to make some appointments to the two vacancies we have and, and then we can move forward, so.
I can definitely chat if you have that offline, then Councilor Barlow?
I just have a question. So if, if we, do we have to have three or could we have four committees? Does it have to have two council members on it or can it just have one?
I, I think.
I think they would need to have two based on the current rules, but there is an option that you could have more committees if you wanted to, certainly.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I think that you could absolutely add a fourth committee if that's.
I'm just curious.
I mean, unless there's something prohibiting it, I don't think there would be, I think there absolutely would be room to add it for a committee if that was council consensus. I mean, unless there's something in the rules that says that we can, but I don't believe there is.
I don't, I don't think there's anything that prohibits it, I just think the logistics of it is what you have to think about, like then you're going to have. Like, then you're going to have a couple of members on two committees and other members only on one committee. Those are kind of some of the things you just might want to take into consideration.
That would be my concern as well. And I, I think we have consensus to keep it the way it is. But something that maybe if we did want to add a fourth committee, there could be like a mayor's ad hoc committee where he assigns two council members maybe to work on a specific job or a specific issue or whatever. I'm not suggesting we do that today. I'm just saying, like, I think a standing fourth committee would cause the logistics issues. That's probably the issue.
Well, that was an issue that came up last year, is that we had a couple of issues that came up, like the renaming issue. There were things that didn't fit easily into the existing jurisdictions that we had. And so we ended up just kind of pursuing them through work study sessions or other avenues. But that is a way to address some of those kind of one-off type issues that don't fit in the topic areas that you have.
That sounds good to me. And yeah, I mean, clearly things like the Public Safety Advisory Task Force, you have the ability to create additional ad hoc committees. If a certain issue comes up that's of sort of utmost importance to the council or if there's something that just doesn't sort of neatly fit under one of these three committees. But also I'd just say too, if council members even offline have additional comments or concerns or something you think about after the fact that you'd like to bring to my attention, let me know. And Keely and I will kind of discuss it. I can kind of go about making the appointments. But I'm just, this is a really good conversation. Thank you, Keely. All right, if we could, just take a quick five-minute bathroom break and then come to the last item. Will, that'll be it. So five minutes. Back in one thirteen.
Webex has it for you. Talk to you later. Probably Jason. Webex. Paul. I'm going to go again.
Oh, yeah, she did.
She did it again.
It's, it's, it's there. I proceed one of them. That's why the guy is there. Before we first go off. Saying, well, Bill. We're good to go. Right, let's give you a sign here.
Are you guys ready? Oh my gosh. Hey, Brandy. Hey, Cassie.
Yeah.
Start singing. There's still a tight three minutes. Tight three minutes, you know. I'm ready.
It's all, it's just very quiet. All right, so we're going to get on to our last topic of the day here, which is item number four. City image and branding. I'm going to go ahead and let Nikki turn and lead this. But obviously, you know, Nikki is our director for the City of Tempe for our Communication and Marketing Office. And then her, she has Ed Barlow, who's the Senior Vice President and Director of Strategic Planning for Northstar. So Nikki, I know you're going to go ahead and kick this presentation off, but I'll just say really quickly, part of why we're having this conversation was there was some marketing and branding changes in the city over the last few years. And I know one challenge was, there are now kind of five out of seven of us on council who weren't here at the point that those changes were made. And there have been some conversations about trying to kind of understand the logo change, the tagline, and kind of how it all incorporates together. And so I was having conversations with a couple of council members about this, which led me to having a conversation with Nikki. And Nikki said, why don't I bring back Ed and I'll talk to you about that and see if we can explain to you some of the background and context. And let's see if the council can get into a good conversation about this to see what direction we want to go in moving forward. So with that said, Nikki, I'll go ahead and turn over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. The roadmap today that we have for you for our discussion is, we'll recap. Yep. We're going to spend some time giving you a recap of what happened six to seven years ago, how we've used and lived the brand in the years since then, and then definitely encourage some discussion and brainstorming and direction from all of you.
Excellent. Thanks, Nikki. Well, it's good to be back and see some familiar faces and some new faces, meet some new folks. I was a project manager with Nikki on this project several years ago. And it's one that we're very proud of at Northstar, and we commend you on the hard work that you've done. And branding is never really finished, so it's good to have these conversations on a regular basis. So just a reminder here of our process that we went through. Northstar is an community branding firm working all over the country. And we've worked with almost 250 different communities over the last 20-some years and go through a research process. We want to understand the community from the people that know it best. And so that's why we spend three or four months doing research. We also gain that consumer or external perspective. And what we're after is to get us what's distinct and ownable for the place, for the community, and then have best to present and articulate that. And so the communities that can get to that strategic distinction through research are more successful and effective with their communication. So even though our audiences may differ across the community, consistency and cohesiveness to that message is best done from a strategic position. So our hourglass, we did research, we got to that strategy. That strategy or DNA statement, which we will review, provides a foundation on which all of those creative decisions and implementation recommendations are made. So lots of research. The good news is, I'm not going to take you through all of these pieces, but it shows the breadth and depth of the research done on behalf of the community. Many of you participated in that, internal, external, quantitative, qualitative, all getting to that DNA statement. So we had more than 1,200 different unique inputs throughout this research process. Very thorough, very interesting research gathered on behalf of the community. And so what this does, a process like this, gets us to that positioning statement. And what positioning can do for us is help us market to our different audiences. And so, you know, your brand isn't a logo or a line. Those are important tools. But we say your brand's what people say about you when you're not around. So is it accurate? Is it far-reaching? Branding is then what you do about it. So the job of any brand is to tell your most compelling, your most competitive story. And then that strategy is to help determine what that story should be about as we start to communicate on behalf of the community. And so I'll read the slide to you. I hope you can see those. These are different voices from the research, some internal, some external, talking about what's so great about Tempe. And there were many, these are just a few examples. It's young and fresh with new ideas and open-minded. It has an atmosphere of being different while other communities in Arizona enjoy the status quo. We may be scientists and researchers, but we're driven by what makes the best place for our kids. So quite a distinction coming out of the research. I'll be a little centered here and use my town as an example. And so some folks ask us with, in the research, are we just Arizona State? Are we one-dimensional? And the answer is no, as the research proved. But my example here is my town in Nashville. Twenty-some years ago, they wanted to shift not away from country music or Music City USA, but they felt like that was all people knew. It was one-dimensional. And so you've probably seen the headlines. Nashville has become an it city. It's a talent magnet. Lots of young folks being drawn not just to visit, but to live there. And they're all in front of me in traffic. It's had such growth. But Nashville's not just country music, so they, the community, the city, and its partners started to pay attention to the creativity behind that music. Not just country music as a performance, but the creativity or the space between the nodes. And so that expanded how folks looked at Nashville as a place to be creative, even outside of entertainment. They're known for healthcare, for publishing. It's become an IT magnet. Amazon has a new campus going in. And so they've been really successful in taking what is a signature, but broadening it and not making that one-dimensional and serving all aspects. So we face the same question here. We heard lots of great things about Arizona State, how it contributes to the community, lots of great descriptors. Those same descriptors are for Tempe as well. So it's not, again, not just... So it's not, again, not just ASU is the single asset of the place. The city, its partners, other aspects of the community are demonstrative in these areas as well. So the neck of that hour blast, the DNA statement is in front of you. And so one thing to remember about a strategy or a DNA statement is it should last a really long time. Now, creative tools may not last as long, but unless you attract something or lose something, but if you attract something that's completely, you know, out of the norm and not based on what you may already have in the area, then this should last quite a long time. So you can see for those drawn to a place brimming with energy, Tempe is home to Arizona State University and centered in Arizona, yet standing apart, very key for Tempe. Where hearts and scientists, scientists lead the way. And so not creative language would never fit underneath a logo, but is the foundation on which concepts were built and decisions were made. And so Tempe had asked for a refresh of the logo, or at least to consider it, but went into this element is all over the city, so it would not be cost-effective to have dramatic change. But you can see the results here with this logo adding some dimension, some movement, some dynamism to that circle or the dynamic community. The tagline, coming from that same strategy, but a memorable phrase, "Making Waves in the Desert." Very compelling, memorable. You don't associate desert with water or necessarily making waves in water. It points to your literal asset, impressive asset of Tempe Town Lake, but also gets to the innovation both at ASU and throughout the community. It's got a lot of appeal to young folks and it is a memorable line because it makes you think. So no tagline is ever gonna tell you the whole story. You want it to introduce and make folks interested to learn more. And this has certainly done that in all the work that you have done, but it's good to have discussion and revisit all of your elements as you move forward.
Okay. Thank you. So now we're gonna transition to discussing and recapping for you how we've been living the brand and expressing it in the years since North Star helped us uncover it and articulate it. So one of the first things we did was to establish three key messages, and those were based on the DNA statement. We took the DNA statements, notions of energy and positive associations with ASU and standing apart, and we created these three messages. These are part of the creative execution. These are the literal words you can hear us sometimes using, and they're definitely the overarching concepts that we try to focus on whenever we can. Key message number one is people are the heart of everything Tempe. And this is capitalizing on the brand attribute of compassion and how we care about it in particular. Key message number two is that Tempe sets the standard and stands alone. And this really takes off on the brand attribute that Ed talked about about standing apart. So Tempe has never been afraid to do different things and stand apart, create a two-mile level lake, for example, in the desert. So this message is meant to conjure that for a wrench. The key message number three is Tempe moves you. And that is capitalizing on the brand attribute of energy. And so it's meant to reflect our literal multi-ball transit system, but also the other ways in which Tempe has energy. So that comes through via our special events and all of our preparation programs. So those were the three key messages. And one of the questions, invitations for the conversation that we have for you later is whether the council would like additional or more frequent input on the key messages. Perhaps every year you were consulted about what key messages we would focus on in the forthcoming calendar year, that's one idea you can consider. So when brand is expressed visually in the logo we use, the tagline, the words, the photos we use to talk about who we are, examples of that that you're seeing here are our report covers, posters, flyers, and banners. You can also see it in the design of our website, in the design of Tempe Today, the water billings letter. It shows up in our economic development and disaster action materials and in the newly renovated redesign entry by science. Our brand is also expressed through the people who live here. And we focused a great deal on the people because that's part of our brand attributes. So whether it is a program to provide narcans at the police officer, or a Jenny's trailer on the community as cooling center, or waste water program, it's all about people and actions related to services and the brand's vibe. And living our brand is just as important as expressing it. And you as council members have a role in living our brand in terms of the policy decisions that, decisions to start programs like Tempe Works, or to enact ordinances that take care of people, you all have a role to play in the actions you take there. And now, to finish my recap, we have a quick for you video to summarize where we're. When those joining the event.
Yeah, there you go.
Team members who helped put together that video and compile this presentation. It was actually thunderous and it was back to what we've been the last few years. And have one more slide.
Okay. Hang on, this is me.
So the feedback sounded like very Friday the 13th.
What we're leaving with you in here is are some questions, some things that you could choose to reflect on as you talk. And Ed will remain with us.
Great, thank you so much. Let me look to Councilmember Keating.
We'll get into these larger discussion points. But I just want to say overall, you know, I think the rebranding, when I first came on council, you guys were just starting that and I think I did give you some negative feedback on the slogan, but overall, the logo, the branding, the colors, the signage, everything just looks fantastic, just absolutely amazing, it's a job well done. And the somehow, you know, I work in marketing, but still think it's kind of stupid sometimes. No offense to anybody, right? Like, I'm a marketing manager, but like, it's like, how does, how do you, how do you make someone think a certain way about a city by the colors, by the fonts and everything like that? But really, you guys have captured it perfectly. Like, it really, you see the signage and you know the Tempe's culture and community and it all just fits in so well. I couldn't imagine well representing the city of Tempe any better than our current logo and the color schemes that we use. So it really has been overall a very job well done. It's been an amazing rebranding of the city, just from, from the bottom. I would say the first logo that we had way back, you know, six years ago, looks like it was made in Microsoft Word, maybe like the early 90s. And now it's just, this is important at the level of where I started with like, nah, to how impressed I've been with just the branding, overall implementation and everything. So good work.
Let's just say I think the branding, you know, it does, it looks, it looks great. And I would like to know what, what can we do as council members to make sure that our branding and our slogans get out there? Because until I heard Councilmember Keating say the number of times making waves in the desert, like, why, why is she saying that? It's so weird. Now I know why, but what can we do to continue that brand and to make sure that people know those guidelines? Because as Councilmember Keating said, the branding and the colors are great, are in freeway signs, rock. And I have been driving around a lot and Chandler put up new ones out there, they are not even close to being as nice as ours. So you guys have a great job. Thanks for doing this.
I'm, I'm not crazy about making waves in the desert. I think it's using people and a lot of times I end up having to have like a long competition trying to explain it. So that would be something that I would recommend changing. But that's, anything else looks good.
No, I think you're on our track. The colors, you just kind of checked the logo that you did. I kind of look at Tempe and, and what we do, you guys were, were talking about, you know, just what is Tempe? And I know we have the university, but we're not the university, so to speak. If you're a town with a university, I had a conversation with a smaller town, a mining town, Superior, that they were trying to brand, but branding themselves as a mining town, not a mining town, they're a town with a mine in it. So they rethought their vision and they rethought their streets and they rethought what Superior can be and what expansions they can do, which was really enlightening, just to kind of walk through that whole process and see them rebrand what they have. And what they had was trail systems, a network of off-road and this weird collection of unique art that could actually be within the city. So I think about Tempe, what we have, kind of a little bit known for is entertainment. It brought different variety and eclectic entertainment, is what I think Tempe kind of stands apart in what we do and how we do it. The difference is, you know, it's like we did have a, the planes that go off the cliff and try to see how far they can pull the top, how far they can go. It's, it's different. It's something that's not often seen, you know, those are the things that I think we need to bring back, those are the things that we market, which that aligns our downtown which is, not to say we do everything around the lake, we can do everything within our area, different little side concerts, venues, we try to do a bunch of our black music, try to bring that back. We might not have our time with that, but we do have events, other music events too. So I think we have the vibrancy. I think it's a place where it's eclectic to transient and then it's also a place where people make permanent homes here and they stay here and they live here for a long time. So it's really a, a unique and small, neighboring, big city kind of town. I think they're worth marketing on that. You know, it's, you know, you're being called a T-town all the time, T-town, yes, or South T, North T, whatever they want to say, but it's, it's kind of those little things like that, it's kind of like organically, just kind of play off of and utilize them and they just kind of work. I think we're getting there and I think we got to really showcase what we do. I think entertainment is what we do the best.
So my perspective, actually, I kind of split the difference, I guess, a little bit. I, I like the logo though, a lot. Logo, because I agree with Councilmember Keating, the old logo was a lot more flat and didn't really pop off the page and I think the new one's a lot more vibrant and a lot more interesting. I like the color scheme of everything and I like a lot of how the materials, you know, look. The, the making waves of the desert one, probably like Councilmember Vice Mayor Adams is still struggling a little bit on that. Because, and honestly, this probably relates a lot to our first exercise today of personality testing, where I tend to be very analytical. So the making waves of the desert sounds very whimsical to me and I'm not a very whimsical person. I mean, I'm very planned and structured and kind of, and not full of brevity. I have a lot of very lengthy words and thoughts, so, you know, so exactly, you know. So I guess, so I guess that's my challenge with it. It's one of those things where, you know, there were other things that were said, you know, during the course, one thing in your presentation, it's something Councilman Gavara just said that really all, that caught me a lot more. The Tempe loops you, that really, that resonated with me. I thought about the entertainment vibe, you're sort of talking about people dancing or people running during an Ironman triathlon or in terms of, you know, moving forward when it comes to innovation and a lot of opportunity with public health. And I, I think that, that actually really connected with me. And even when you just said Councilmember Ward, you know, Tempe is different. You know, I kind of thought of like keep Austin weird or something like that. I mean, that really, that resonated with what I feel sort of Tempe is. The making waves of the desert thing, I think I had a very similar reaction that the Councilmember Garland had, which was like when I, you know, I was with the city for eight years and left in 2016 and when I came back, there were a lot of folks who kept saying, you know, making waves of the desert. And I was like, what does that mean? Like, I just couldn't, I didn't have any emotional connection to it whatsoever and I couldn't quite place it in my head. I understood, I understood what it meant. I mean, of course, the concept of waves and the town lake and a desert, we wouldn't know that. I got that, but it just didn't connect with me in any kind of deeply personal or emotional way. And so I think that's the one that I'm still struggling with a little bit. But I, but I can see, and the other thing I would just say really quickly too is, to the third bullet from the bottom about what level of brand integration, I mean, my perspective would be too, even if we talked about doing something different, I would want our partners involved in that conversation. I wouldn't want us to make it just solely as a city. Because when I think about, you know, the, the Chamber of Commerce and Tempe Tourism, Local First, Downtown Tempe Authority, they're also very big parts of marketing the city. When I think of, you know, DTA, it's the, it's the art festivals that are coming here twice a year, the Fantasy and Light Parade, the Boat Parade, and obviously Tempe Tourism with all the new hotels, the Omni coming online. I just want to make sure that whatever we're doing, they feel comfortable with it as well and we're not doing one thing and they're doing three or four different things and now the message is jumbled because everyone has their own branding and their own marketing and their own ideas and vision. So I guess that's my perspective, I mean, but I'll, you know, anyone else? Yes?
I just want to, I just want to tee you back on the mayor's point. When I, when I said the thing about the slogan, I didn't think that would be anywhere near anyone that it would be at all, honestly. So I remember, I liked the idea of the slogan, right? We are saying Tempe is doing big things and so we're making waves and then we're also drawing, you know, pointing out the fact that we have a lake as well in the middle of the desert. So I like the idea of where we're trying to go with the slogan. My only issue with it is, is that it's five words. You know, like, I, I don't think a slogan, to me, a slogan should be at maximum three words. Like, what's the most famous slogan you'd just do it? I mean, it's just too long for me. I think six years ago, I suggested either just flat, making waves, or desert waves. And to kind of communicate the same thing that, I think, I think making waves in the desert perfectly captures what Tempe is doing, perfectly. That is a great description of how our, what our city is doing in, in the region and the nation. But again, I like the brevity, you know, being given down to two words, desert waves, making waves, or whatever. I mean, we don't have to have that competition now. That, that was my only issue with it, but as far as it could set, I think it's absolutely outstanding.
Councilmember Keating?
Thank you. Graphics are fine, they're great. I think what I heard was an illustration and ties into my reaction. Making waves in the desert to me is fine, but we stop there. We're not making waves with just stopping there. There's barely a rep. We want to make waves, let's make tsunami-like waves and be bolder. I think we need to be bolder in how we illustrate waves. We just put it out there and let people try to identify with that and it's not enough. We stop short. We're not controlling the narrative. We stop short. We need to be bold and control the narrative better. We need to tell our story. Today, yesterday, from directors, I hear thematic stories and how it supports the innovation. The whole list of words was fine, but let's take a few, let's be intentional. So when I wrote brand, I wrote established, intentional and aspirational. Let's take some of those bold concepts and one, tell our story. I wrote, so waves for me are just words. I, I agree, but let's, let's tell people what we mean by waves. Annexation, Public Safety Task Force, Hometown for All, these homeless initiatives, we use the word innovation when describing them, but let's talk about this wave that it makes in this country and how Tempe is leading in so many ways. We're not bold enough and I think we can be.
I think that speaks to a little bit of where I'm coming from also. I think that we need to have a citywide marketing plan and actually have somebody that specifically focuses on marketing. I don't think we're marketing our city enough and I think that's kind of to speak to Councilmember Chen's points also, and I think that that would be really helpful. And, you know, I see other cities and I just, I see them doing, and it's not critical, right? I see them doing a better marketing of their cities and I think that we can really improve in that manner, just having somebody take the lead on that in your team or whatever that looks like, but I think that would be really helpful.
Yeah, I love what I'm hearing in the conversations. Here's one of the things, it, you're talking, it's talking about tourism almost, it's talking about what Tempe is about, it's talking about what the excitement is about Tempe. We kind of have a real opportunity right now, as you see Scottsdale is kind of becoming that more of that bachelorette destination like Nashville, like Austin. And we are battling all the time, in my opinion, with Nashville, Austin, those unique cities that provide the entertainment that we provide, so to speak. When you say, you know, like make Austin weird, that's the point. I mean, it kind of, boom, done. And when you go to Austin, it's different, you know, and around there is different. We are the same way. We're unique, we're vibrant, we make waves, you know, or we move people, or we move you, it's just boom, 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 real simple. And then to expand on that, I think it's how we broadcast what we're doing, how we highlight the entertainment. It's not to say we're just all entertainment, we can highlight the programs too, but I think people want to see the excitement. People want to see what, what's making me get that attention automatically real quick. So how do we orchestrate that? How do we keep promoting that? And I think we've talked about increasing our budget for promotion of Tempe in various ways. We have opportunities in other ways. I, you know, if Coyote deals go through, that's another revenue opportunity, another exposure opportunity in terms of what Tempe is all about. It's our cadre of, once again, entertainment, it's our cadre of the events, it's our cadre of, of what we're so different about. Then you see every morning on the news, who's more highlighted out of every city in Arizona than we are? We're constantly being viewed because of our lake, because of our downtown, and it just gets better. So we're getting free marketing as it is right now, we just got to expand on it. And I think that for the most part, we, we sit in the driver's seat, but we got to start driving back, because I think the opportunity is truly there, what's coming into our city and how big we're getting.
I was going to say something kind of silly. Councilmember Keating has sent us a number of times that you're watching, I don't know if it's baseball or basketball, and they say, here we are in Phoenix, Arizona, and it's always showing Tempe.
Yeah.
We need to get somebody to fix that one. Marketing.
Councilmember Garland, there might be a way, but the NHL will change that. A little too soon on that one.
So I think one of the things, I guess, even to put a finer point in kind of some of my earlier comments, so I'll just, I'll use one example, this will speak directly to, I know, to Councilmember Chen's heart in here, really is talking about even a lot of things with food and beverage. So one of the things that when I go to, you know, and Councilman Gavara touched on it a little bit, you know, Downtown Scottsdale, Chandler, Gilbert, they're all now creating these very new downtowns and getting a lot of very cool local food concepts. Many times there may be the second or third iteration of an already successful concept in Phoenix or some other part of the valley potentially, but we're not getting a lot of those concepts here. And the biggest challenge is, you know, we're spending, the two of us are spending time meeting with a lot of very popular valley restaurateurs, trying to entice them to come to downtown Tempe and other portions of our city. And one of the biggest challenges we're facing though is that from a marketing standpoint, I mean, we hear a couple of things all the time. It's, well, first of all, I haven't been down here in four or five years and I had no idea that all this was going on. They have no idea about the hotels, they don't know about the multifamily residential, they're not aware of all the Class A office space. There, it's like, there's this mindset of, I went to school here 25 years ago and that's like frozen in their mind, but that's what it is. Like, it's ASU, it's a college town and that's who we are. And so if you're not living in Tempe and even traveling downtown on a consistent basis, you have no idea throughout its new assets that have popped up over the last five to six years. And I find that sometimes like with myself and Councilmember Chen are talking to these folks, this is like the first time they're hearing that story, you know, and, and so, and I really would like for the story to frankly be in their minds and where they get to that meeting with us and with the economic development vision. If we're telling that story for the first time, we're already a little bit behind the eight ball. And then the second thing, you know, and I kind of already touched upon this, is just the notion of, you know, the college town portion of it. I mean, Jefferson State University, I mean, we both worked there, it's, it's the largest public university in the country. It is an integral part to who we are and sort of what we do, but we have a lot of other assets as well. And I just want to try to find ways to communicate that to a lot of these folks when we're talking about food and beverage and creative retail concepts. The other thing I'll say too, and I don't know if this is still totally accurate, but it was as of three or four years ago, when people talked about Tempe being a college town, I mean, 85284, at one point, and probably still is, was the second highest per capita income area in the, in all of America of the county. You had more people living in 85284, living in million dollar homes on sprawling lots. And so there are, these are clearly people who have disposable income and have the ability to go out and enjoy food and beverage, you could go to a wine bar, but they would tell me all the time, Cory, we go in and going to Scottsdale or going to Phoenix or other places to do these things, not because we want to, but that's because we're finding the options that we actually want to partake in. We would rather keep our sales tax money in our city and support Tempe, but we have to have the right concepts here. We're not just going to eat what we don't want to eat because we're trying to keep money in the city of Tempe's coffers. So I think my biggest thing is, the marketing, I think, has to tell that story and has to begin to get across to people. It's not, it's not, if you disrespect to ASU, we love them and I've, I've worked there for nearly six years, but I want other things to pop up in someone's mind. I don't want, when a restaurateur comes to talk to me next week, that this will be the first time they'll have seen all this stuff, but the first time they've even conception wise or the other. Because I think if we're doing that, we're already two steps behind.
I agree. I don't want to highlight ASU. To be honest with you, I don't want, I don't think we need to highlight ASU, we need to highlight us and ASU has marked us and that's just a good thing.
To that, to that point, Joe, I think ASU does a great job of highlighting themselves.
Yeah.
ASU is a global institution. They don't need us at all. They're doing great.
Well, if I may, because they were intentional about their branding, right? I, I have worked, I don't work for ASU, I work for the ASU foundation, but I have been witness to how ASU changed their public image and we can borrow a page from that, but they're not afraid to be bold about their message. And I think we have a lot to offer. When you sit in front of the dais and see the diversity represented on the council, that's a strength, that's a strength and a statement about our community and who we represent and what we represent. I think people will connect with that. I think the city of Tempe has so much great talent and a lot to offer. I think we can be bold. We can, we can take that risk on as someone who doesn't apparently take risks.
Apparently taking that with speaking of the personality testing you did earlier of us being very, not risk diverse, but more methodical. So I'm just trying to think too, where do you think we might go from here, I guess? You know, I think you've heard some of the feedback, I guess, from the council about kind of where we think we, some of our additional thoughts could have been at this level here, you're, you don't have your feedbacks.
I think we could definitely process what we've heard today and go back as a team. I think it's from Andrew and others, really kind of bring you additional plans, additional ideas, what do you consider?
Now, I was going to say, to piggyback on what someone else said, I think it was probably Councilmember Keating, I do believe we're on the right path. I mean, absolutely, when I look up here and I look at that second bullet, you know, city logo, color palette, visual elements, I mean, I think all those things, I think most people that appear, if not all, are spot on. I look at all of those things and go, I really like the way that, I like with all of those things. I think it's just the tagline with this little bit of trepidation with the council. So no, I think that'd be great if we can come back with some additional messaging about what we might want to do going forward or to Vice Mayor Adams' point too. Also, you know, if, whatever we go forward with, making sure that we're involved in our partners and that they're part of the conversation. I know you're, you know, you're on the Tempe Tourism Board, Councilmember Chen is on the Downtown Tempe Authority Board, I, you know, making sure you're part of it and just sort of trying to figure out like, you know, kind of who we want to be moving forward and then giving you the appropriate, you know, kind of marketing budget to make sure that we really are having a full-blown marketing plan, that we don't just create the materials and then kind of, you know, move on, that we can say, hey, you know, council, we really have an ability to blast this out in the ether now because you've actually given us the resources we need to drive it home.
And that is really key.
Yeah, I think it would be really helpful if you come back to us and, and develop a marketing plan, so we could discuss it. And I think a lot of that is about this, you know, Councilmember Chen talking about being bold and, and Cory, you know, talking about that also. And just have it be like a real plan, action plan, so we, we know what we're doing to address it. Because I, ASU is great at marketing themselves, but I just don't think we are at all, I think we're really falling short on that.
Anyone else, any other comments or, yes, please?
I'll add a little bit. So it's good to reconsider things that you think aren't working well. You want to be sure you pay attention to why you think that is. And if you go through another exercise, creative exercise for additional options, some communities do that and they land right back where they were. They just want to put a little more effort and budget and volume behind it. To your point about being bold, that, that's great for a community like Tempe, but bold lines and bold narratives and bold language, it's a little harder to get buy-in. So as, as a group that's done this a long time, your current line, even though you called it whimsical, and from North Star's estimation, it is a bolder line than some of the safe lines that other communities use. The challenge with brevity is that the shorter the line, the less specific it can be. And so you have to have a lot of things behind it that expand on that. And no line, long or short, is going to tell your own story, it's having everything else around it that gives the content. So that's why when you do go through the, through the creative exercise of determining if you want to consider other options, don't put too much weight on it, because you're going to, if you're just looking at new options for lines, you're going to look at it in a vacuum, by itself, nothing else, and that's a, that's a hard burden for any line to carry. So just keep that in mind as you evaluate that. And a lot of folks don't like when I explain, explain this this way, you don't want to have a contest, you want to, you know, be very careful how, you don't want to do this at a public council meeting. Creativity or creative decisions aren't really a democracy, you want to be sure that it's hardworking and it's not just majority decision rules, it's what's going to be effective, successful. And if you're going to bring on other partners, you know, it's got to be broad enough. And so the line may be different for each one of these, but are they integrated? So that's a great goal to have, but as far as evaluating new lines, just get a range so that you know where you can end. Is it bold? Is it, you know, that's going to break through more clutter and people are going to pay attention, but it's maybe harder for everybody to, to understand it out of the gate. And creativity is subjective, you know, some people are, have, you know, very left brain, some people are very right brain, and it's very difficult to get a line or language of any sort that serves both of those. So you want to try to get something as memorable as you can, that is as specific as you can and is going to just spark that interest to know more. It doesn't have to do everything. So that's just, just some advice as, as you move forward, if you're, if you're evaluating that line. And like I said, you may go through it and you're like, hmm, it is pretty good, but let's put a little more volume to it, a little more budget behind it. Or, or get those stories that, that are bold and stand out and are, are making those waves. Get those, get those in front of folks.
Sounds good. Any other councilors, any other thoughts or comments or questions? Again, we'll just sort of look to you for next steps. All right, Nicky, we'll just sort of look to you for next steps and we'll try to find some time to circle up again when we have a plan as to how we want to move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that said, everyone, the time is now 2:06 PM. We don't have any more agendaized business for today. So, with that said, we are adjourned 54 minutes early. Thank you so much for putting out one of the weekends.